Hi, Wind Cam. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting on Tuesday, December tenth. We have a fairly large agenda today, starting at six thirty now. The Planning Board will be meeting till about seven thirty where we will adjourn and we will then start the Master Plan Steering Committee meeting for a hour till eight thirty and thereafter we'll be starting at eight thirty to talk about our budget and the Town Manager should be joining us as well for that and adjourning about ten. And there also, for the first hour, I'll talk specifically about that agenda. We are going to talk about the ZBA petition number three eight nine seven for thirty-six Chester Street. We also, as a board, will be talking about the peer design, a peer review design consultants, which will also then go into obviously our budget discussion later on in the evening, be part of that discussion as well. And then, but to kick it off, since there's no one in the room, I don't need to make the announcement, but we are on Wind Cam and everyone is being recorded. We will start with open updates. I guess I will start-
We can start with the LHD and just at least let everyone-
Yeah, want to make an announcement on that?
Yeah, let everybody know that there is a local historic district study commission information session-
Committee.
Committee. Information session this Thursday at seven PM at the Town Hall Auditorium. We sent out, and Savannah Nicole actually went, went out and visited a lot of members within the proposed district, which centers around the Center Business District and goes a little bit further out into Lincoln and McCollin, some of the surrounding neighborhood. So, we're trying to gather information about the willingness for the property owners and business owners and whether or not they would think that this is a, that this would be a good idea for them to be part of the district. This is one of several steps that we would be taking in order to eventually have a local historic district encompassing that area. The draft boundary is still, I said, the boundary is still in draft at this point. The bylaw has not been written. The idea is that we're just trying to gauge support so that the Select Board can make a decision on whether or not to move forward or potentially change course based upon this first information session. This is kind of a, a slow process that, it's not like we're running towards spring here. It's a potential that it's most likely fall. But I think the idea is that we really have to get not just the, the property owners and the business owners, but there's also some school admini-, there are also some school buildings that are within this district. So, working with superintendent, school committee, EFPBC is definitely going to be part of the answer for that bylaw. And just as a, in terms of what the, the bylaw or the, the district was trying to do, in general, it's, it's really two things. One is to prevent demolition of historically significant structures and contrib-, sorry, contributing, contributing structures within the district. And also to allow room for additions or new development within the district. So, those are the two main parts.
To allow room that, or to allow changes.
To allow-
Change is the legal word and it's to be that it's compatible with the town center.
Yeah, thank you. So, that's for the local historic district.
That one can, either you or, I don't know if you're working together now-
We are, yeah.
Send an email to the entire Historical Commission because they were asking about it and, and location and everything. Again, it hadn't been on the web, so they were-
Right, so-
Specifically the Commission.
So, I know that there are three members that have already said that they're going to be coming on Thursday, so that's good. But I'll try to get as many people from the, not just the local historic district study committee, but also from the Historical Commission as well.
Thank you.
I think I'll stop there for the moment.
Is anyone else from here going? I was gonna go, but I can't now.
I'm unable to attend. It's Thursday, right?
Yeah.
I'm unable to attend.
It's a rare Thursday I'm able to go, so.
Yeah.
I'll be there. Okay.
I had it on there, but Violet has a violin concert now and I-
Can you, for our meeting, that on the seventeenth and the beginning of our agenda, just have, give a like five minutes so you and Maureen can give us an update.
So, I'm actually going to do, write a memo of some kind in our-
About what? I'm sorry.
To, to recap what happened at the meeting because, well-
Wait, I'm sorry, back up. Didn't hear something.
Sure, yeah. Well, Heather was asking for a recap-
Of?
Of the Thursday night information sessions for the LHD.
A future recap.
Oh, oh, yeah.
And I said, more than just like a five minute recap, I'm actually going to write some type of a memo or report because there are a number of people that can't go to the meeting, that want to kind of find out what the sentiment is. So, it's really going to be directed towards Select Board, School Administration, Planning Board, like kind of everyone saying that this, this is what happened at the meeting. So, it'll be a little more formal than just a little update. It's, it's supposed to be recorded, yes.
Also, there's, I did skim the sixty-five page booklet from Mass Historical Commission-
Establishing, yeah.
Establishing local historic district. Everybody on this board should be conversant with it. And I do see that the Planning Board has a legal role. I was not aware of that until I read that. But we actually have a vote at one point.
I believe it's a recommendation vote?
Okay, but even so, but we have a legal role as part of the process set forth by state law, so. And then, I think they, I'm not aware of there being a chairman. There's supposed to be a chair and a clerk.
I, for the Study Committee, I don't think it's necessary. I-
It says so in the booklet.
Not for the Study Committee? For the Study, okay. I'm not, then that's-
So, I think you should be reviewing it again, frankly, because I think we've got to get a flow chart and really understand it and our Historical Commission, although they aren't legally empowered in any way, they certainly are the obvious commission in town because of their role as advocates for historic preservation. So, I think a flow chart would be helpful.
Could I ask Brian that you send a link to that document around?
Sure.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
My ability to maneuver through that site is limited.
It's called Establishing Local Historic Districts and it's out of the Massachusetts Historical Commission.
It's easy to find, but yeah.
Yep.
For many people it may be easy to find. At this moment-
I can't do mine.
It's ancient Greek to me.
Anyway, so Brian's making a note. I was wondering if you got any first plants from, about the memo, note you wrote to, to the AG's office about the, whatever, abandoned house on Johnson Road?
Oh, I had another question though. I wanted to ask how it went when you were telling people about-
Really great. We made sure to go to Watch Park as well, so they're all aware. It was really awesome to get to speak to the business owners and be able to introduce myself.
Oh, good.
And people were super friendly, which was a really wonderful experience, so.
Welcome, welcome. Welcome to wonderful Winchester. Use your mic.
But keep in mind, because there was an attempt to, of course, it was years and years ago. It becomes irrelevant in some ways, but that the business owners were supportive and it was the property, business owners, it was the property owners who were less enthusiastic. So, that's where we're going to really have to focus.
The landlords?
No, the property owners.
The property owners versus, versus, you know, any business owners or, you know.
Right, so it's nice to get their support, but-
Were you talking about the Business Improvement District or the LHD?
No, LHD. That was probably easily twenty-five years ago, so, a long time. Again, and for history, it's pretty irrelevant, except for the experience, which was the property owners are going to be extremely important.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anyway, back to Johnson Road.
So, I have about seventy-eight emails that I need-
Really?
That I, no, not about that. That I, that-
God, you're in that one.
Right, so today was not-
Yeah, yeah.
But, but I would imagine there's probably a response of some kind in there that I will have more of an update.
Even if per country, but, but maybe not.
We had the MBTA hearing, which was Maureen attended as well, at which I spoke on behalf of the Planning Board. A lot of residents were very happy that the Planning Board came forward and spoke. The unit, the Select Board chose not to, and I don't think any other boards or commissions came in and spoke at it. So, we were very, residents were very happy that we took their position. And those, there are notes taken on that, that the Town Manager Lisa Wong took that are online, I believe, of what all the comments were and all the feedback. The, my personal take of a lot of the comments were they wish we had more control over it, but we actually have almost no control over it, except through our delegates. And they don't have much push. They have some, but they don't have as much as a lot of residents would like.
That's not quite right, because we have, we have, they're going to need approval from the town. Yeah, I mean, we have leverage.
We have leverage. They need some easements from the town, for town meeting and for town meeting to release those easements. They need to, the town meeting has to be comfortable with the project and-
Heather's been on this project too long. I think there's a sort of burnout on the part of so many people who've been involved, but I will say there are two people who, one of whom is a town meeting member. I guess I can say it because their memo's been circulating, Sally and Dennis Dale. Dennis is a landscape architect. Sally works with him in support and they've really been doing some-
They're great, they're, they're great folks.
They've been, thank you, Betsy. They've been, they prepared a memo and it was quite specific because some of the requests have to do with the veneer on the station and it is a veneer of granite that's used elsewhere in the town and we'd really like to see it retained. And the T has been proposed, or has proposed using concrete and we've said, no, we really don't. We want the veneer. So, then the T's saying, well, we don't think it's available anymore. You know, that quarry, we can't get it. And then Dennis, who's a landscape architect, said, well, that's not really true. I know places where you can get it. Excuse me. Right, exactly. So, it's the specific responses that make a big difference, because when the commis-, group sits around this table, the working group, we often, I think, have, there's a consensus about what the goals are, but then there, it just kind of fall, goes off into nowhere. But when the Dales put a lot of time in with links on their memo, because it was digitized, to specific examples, I think it really did help and it did go to the T.
Yeah, that was in the meeting. That was post.
Correct, it was after the meeting. But I circulated it, I believe, to this entire board and it went to a lot of people, including our two state senators and state reps, so a lot, and the Town Manager, of course. So, I think there, I, I understand there'll be a discussion. It's on the agenda. I just looked because I'm liaison to the Design Review Committee. They'll be discussing it tomorrow night too. And several of their members have been in the working group for a while, so.
Yeah.
I actually think there's some opportunity to make some headway on this.
Well, I think, yeah, maybe I should-
It's why I keep it more positive.
Well, I think there's, we can make headway. There is discussion about let's get a ramp behind Thompson Street. There's ADA issues back there. There's not enough width to get those ramps back there. So, there's certain things where residents are like, get it off of, you know, get Shore Road and get it onto Thompson Street. And it's like, well, we still have to abide by ADA compliance and there's nothing we could do or any one of us could do to change that. And we want them to be, we want the station to be ADA supportive.
Oh, it has to be.
A hundred percent, if not more than the state standard. So, it just, it kind of, really the topics that we discussed and we hit on as a Planning Board is the ones that I think that the residents are coming in, like the wall and let's make sure that the great wall stays great.
It's better than the alternative, as they say, right?
You know, and so, again, I just, there are certain things where let's go back to the drawing board. Let's, and at this point, the MBTA has the flexibility where they could shut the station down on us. And if they do, that-
I don't, right again, that's, I can think a bit.
Yeah. Well, so it's on the extreme edge.
I guess I'm often marveling, left marveling over government and how people take positions and threats. Basically, it's negotiating and so they'll say, I'll do this if you don't do that.
Right, right.
And so, it's really not about any longer the law. It's not even maybe somewhat, well, it is exposed politics, but it's not about law. It's just about who wants what and what your leverage is. And leverage is why we're talking, what we're talking about right now. And I do think that the, given the Baker administration's commitment to smart growth, given our zoning, given the support, we should be able to get through economic development at the state level. But we've got housing coming online. It's not even just a fiction. That we, I think, have a good argument to make that we're, we, the station's not going to close. We want to serve the community through transportation. It's on, I, I think I'm sometimes the only person reading the big print paper, Boston Globe, every day, but transportation's a front page.
Yes, it's very, it's a front page. I know, it's on, it's on, I know. It's there almost every day.
So, I, I'm not too concerned about that. Yes, it's been said, but I mean, I, you know, so many of these builder developers come in and talk about their four EVs, which they're never going to do. So, it's a question of how we respond when we hear about these threats. And I, I just wouldn't take that to, to, to heart.
Yeah.
I think we've got some opportunities still and, but I do think the train's moving really quickly and that's why I have, as all you, of you know, been saying, where's the group? Because the sooner Winchester gets a united front on what we want, the easier they-
A letter went out. The large, the large- The large, the letter did go out from the group.
From the, since the hearing?
The working group, yes.
We've not seen it.
That's because it came when Brian was-
So, Beth sent, Beth sent a sixty percent letter, Beth Rudolph, sorry.
To whom?
To the MTA.
To them, to-
She should be copying all of us. Could you send that back?
Yeah, I haven't.
No, it shouldn't have to be through you. She can send it to the Planning Board.
Just, just, because, because we need to be in the loop.
Yeah.
No, I was, yeah, she's-
Well, I mean, it should have been-
It goes to everyone who's in the working group.
Yeah, it should-
It should go to the whole Planning Board. I'm sorry. It's, and I have been in the working group, so I didn't, uh, I've attended a lot of meetings over the years, so I don't know how that-
Well, it's those who attended the last meeting that created the memo, so.
Okay, but even so, we can be copied. Thank you.
No, no problem. The Abbey Road will be coming before us next, next week to discuss their guardrails. I'm hoping Beth can add more information on that.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's a, right now, it's a wood, it's a wooden with a steel back and he wants to change it to an all steel, which is, although it's not aesthetically as pleasing, it's, it is higher safety. It was his choice. We basically said, both of us, you know, our personal opinions, we're not speaking for the board at all, was basically like, we prefer what we approved.
Yeah, yeah.
I would prefer what I approved.
You would prefer what you approved and I would also prefer what we approved. And he says, well, I'll, I'm going to try anyway.
Well, can we keep that to five minutes?
Yeah. We don't have to, that's more of just an update.
No, it's just an update and Beth will be here to provide support for the Planning Board if you have questions.
Engineering is also not coming this evening. The only thing that they had was this ZBA petition and I have those notes, which I don't think anyone has, so I'm, I have, I, so, but there was no other reason for them to come for the rest of the time, just in case, so.
And then, the other thing is the master plan, which we'll talk about when we begin the master plan section and update. I think, let's move onward to our next agenda item, which is ZBA petition number three eight nine seven.
So, I did not develop a memo for this, but I'm going to give a little history of this property and some, a couple of recommendations, but just full disclosure, I did not have time to do a full, full review of this petition.
Before you begin, I'm just going to say, just for anyone who's listening or just so everyone knows, it's seeking a special permit under section three point five point seven of our Winchester zoning bylaw with accordance with chapter forty-eight, section nine of the Massachusetts General Laws. There, so as to be permitted to demolish a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling, even though the house has already been demolished, located on a lot which does not meet the lot frontage and lot width requirements, and to construct a new single-family dwelling that will meet all setback requirements.
Thank you, DM.
Very much.
And thank you, Heather. So, this was the result of a demolition application from August of 2018. The letter from the Historical Commission says that this is an eligible building. And not only, sorry, in a four to three vote, the commission determined that, that this eligible building was historically significant. However, in a five to two vote, the commission further determined that the eligible building would not be subject to a delay. So, at this time in September of 2018, it was, it was allowed to get demolished at, at any time.
Why would they do that?
I don't have the informa-, so, based upon the letter, it doesn't say exactly why they've, because they were not looking at new, they were not looking at these new drawings, obviously, back in eighteen. They weren't. So, they, so typically the way it happens is that something would get lifted based upon the replacement structure. I have no idea what happened here. My guess is that it was based upon the, whatever was left in terms of the historic nature of the house, that it had since been altered or changed beyond what was, I'm totally guessing.
So, we must not, yeah, see.
Yeah, so, it was a five, it was a five to two vote.
Wasn't the unanimous vote.
Right, so it was a five to two vote to let it be demolished.
I have to say, I want to follow up on that. That's where again, yeah. Next time you're attending their meeting, I think they need, as a group, I guess I just don't think it's natural or obviously for a lot of people, but this is the time for negotiation. That's what I'm saying about the law. And that's where it's, I mean, yeah, they can let go or not, but this is, it's not something that's natural for a lot of people, but this is an opportunity to negotiate and-
Well, back at the time, I mean-
When the meetings that I have attended recently, and unfortunately I was unable to make last nights, they have been negotiating, so perhaps this is from a previous time.
Well, I've attended meetings too, so let me just throw that out. It is a concept that I think boards are a lot still-
You're saying at the demo delay hearing, not at the special permit hearing, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. This was a weird case where there was a demo hearing when there was no, there was no-
Proposal.
Proposal, which I, I would say is odd and is not, it's not the norm for them.
There are, there's two criteria. There's a criteria of what defines it as historical and then there's a second one for the delay. So, you have to meet both criteria. So, they defined it as historically significant, but they voted that it was-
Right, it was a four, three, five, two, right, so two people-
That's what I was just curious.
It did not meet the qualifications to be delayed. So, so it's the two parts and the second part is something about the second part.
That's what I was asking about.
Yeah, and I don't have it in front of me. I can pull it up.
You and I say qualifications, but in the end, it's really judgment, but also it's about personalities and sense of-
Process, also.
Yeah, right, just a sense of negotiation and some people just don't negotiate and I think-
I think it's unwise to second guess what it is they did or didn't do.
Well, I guess I'll say it's something that boards generally are weak on. That's my view and I will state it. And I think that having staff helps people learn a process. I've learned because, should I say this on camera? I'm married to an expert, so. And guess what? Our two kids are experts too. I live with negotiators, so. But that's, government can do that and all you have to do is read the paper and you see how negotiation takes place all the time at higher levels of government. But this town, I think, can do better.
Agreed. This was the vote from the Historical Commission meeting last night about this petition. So, it's, it was a unanimous decision for favorable, favorable action, that the finishes should harmonize with the surrounding historic neighborhood and should be limited to wood or shingle and trim, wood clambering or shingle and trim. And the garage should be set back as far as possible. It'd be limited to approximately a third of the width of the facade. This may require some redesign in order to reduce the width of the garage. So, based upon my very short review of this and the commission's recommendations, my recommend, my recommendation would be to support the Historical Commission's recommendations. The other thing to note is that the only thing that's non-conforming about the lot, because there's no house there now, is it is a sixty-foot wide frontage instead of sixty-five.
Standard.
So, it's a sub, but, but the new building is, is still adhering to all the setbacks. So, generally, yeah, well, I'll, I'll just stop there. That, that is, that is the non-conformity. It's a, it's a, it's a five-foot width deficiency in the frontage, but all of the setbacks are adhered to in the new, in the new design.
I actually couldn't, oh, were you still going?
I'm done.
I couldn't find the side setback, because I was curious if they could, if they could rotate the garage.
So, you couldn't find it because this was on my desk. You did get, so did everyone get a new plot plan that shows the new, because the original application-
I didn't get a plot plan.
Yeah, the original application actually did not have a proposed, a proposed plot plan.
Mine was folded way at the back.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I have them here that shows the side setbacks at ten four, the, the, the ten four and ten five.
So, is that enough to turn?
They could turn it, but-
I feel like ours is like that.
They could turn it a bit, but then the building, the facade would not be parallel to the street. I think when I look at the way they've designed it- I think, when I look at the way they've designed it, it looks like they've made the facade parallel to the street, so that if they turned it, it wouldn't work.
It's slightly off.
No, no, I mean, turn the whole, like, turn the entrance to the garage.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're talking about to get in from the side?
To get into the side, because you know we don't like to see the garage doors. I thought if they turn it sideways, they can access it, like we did on that two-family.
Yeah, I think what would happen is that, the way that you could do that, is that you would have to make the driveway a little wider in order to swing in, and then they would probably lose a little bit of square footage, but I, but yes, I think it's possible.
That was my suggestion.
I mean, they're right, um, they, they designed it to be right under site plan review. It's at thirty-five ninety-eight. That's the, the square footage, but they were already in for, um, special permit. But the idea is that they're right up against that thirty-six hundred square foot, um, trigger for site plan review. However, I mean, I think the second, um, vote that the historical commission made kind of says, you know what, there's probably some room for some improvement here related to that width of the garage. So I, I thought, you know, I think, it seems like we're all saying roughly the same thing.
No, Heather Hannon's right. I see, I mean, I appreciate the comment from the historical commission, but that just isn't gonna happen because of the, what they've got with the two-bay garage. Um, unless Heather, unless it's, uh, the historical commission's request isn't going to happen. It's just, that's the width. There's no room to shrink it any further, I don't think. Um, so, I mean, I'm supportive of this quickie, uh, recommendation from the historical commission. I, I think you're right, if it, if it could be moved around, but then they're into a redesign, and I'm totally, I'm bored with it, but I don't know how they'd go with this.
Well, they're, they're saying to move it as far back as possible. You're saying to not just move it back, but actually put the garage on the, rotate the garage.
It would have to be the back, because the windows, it doesn't matter if it's flush.
But in order to move the entrance to the garages onto the left side of the property, they would undoubtedly have to shrink that building. Just saying, they have a, they're, they're just barely meeting the ten-foot setback right now. So, you'd probably need, um, you need a turnaround in there. I'm guessing you'd need more than ten feet on the side of the house. I don't know how much.
It's the radius. No, no, ours is pretty tight. I'm not sure what it is.
So, it is setback.
Pardon?
It is setback in the plan.
It's.
From the porch.
No, I'm talking about if you wanted to.
And for the facade by about five feet.
We're talking about the side entrance.
If you wanna put a side entrance in, you're gonna need more space between the building and the left property line.
Well, that's the point.
And I don't know how much.
Yeah, you'd be shrinking their, the footprint.
You'd have to shrink the footprint.
Yeah.
Which, I'm just saying, that's, I don't have a problem doing that.
We've asked other people to rotate their garages.
We have. The question's, have we done that on a, on a lot this narrow?
Lose some square footage. Well, we can just, I mean, we're not gonna figure it out right now. Um, I think that's a good idea, uh, without knowing how far this.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's back to the drawing board with the architect to do it.
I, I, I agree with you, Heather, on this. It's just they would have to change their plans, that's all.
Exactly.
Because it is a really narrow lot. I, I have, I just have a really minor question, and I note that it's, is, the proposal here is for wood clapboard or hardy board for the exterior.
Hardy plank, yeah.
And is, I mean, to be honest, as a homeowner, I would be happy with hardy plank, because you don't have to, there's much lower maintenance on it. So, other than, um, the fact that it's not wood, is there some reason the board doesn't like that? I mean, you can, the hardy plank, granted, doesn't look exactly like wood.
It doesn't.
But on the other hand, I have to paint my house every eight to nine years, because it's made out of wood, and it's.
You can touch up on the parts. We don't, um, we haven't done that.
Well, maybe you have better paint.
Yeah, well, I, my guess is that it seemed like the materials that they're using for this house are quite, quite high-end. They're using some copper flashing, and, and why not just kind of, why not just do it? Like, why not make it, um, make it sing, I guess?
Yeah.
They're about for, uh, great materials overall, yeah.
Okay.
I'd rather support the wood. I mean, they're getting a break.
Oh, I don't have a problem.
There are lots of wood to play in a house.
Right, and honestly, as, 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 as most of us who have wood houses know, I mean, the, well, if the town are, and you know what?
Actually, yeah. Also, the houses and houses still.
The maintenance is not that difficult.
Thank you, Beth, so you're right.
I mean, every once in a while, we have our house stained, and, uh, yeah, and that's about all it takes.
It's not difficult, but it does add to the cost of owning a house.
Well, they're, they're down.
Swells, slightly, but not ver-, not very darn much. Not very darn much. You're, you're not talking about tens of thousands of dollars, really not.
Hey, go for it, that's it.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, because we had, we had, we had to do our house this last summer.
If you have to compare the cost of wooden clapboards to hardy plank boards, the long-term maintenance costs are much lower for the hardy plank, because you don't have to paint them.
Most people in Winchester still have clattered houses.
I'm not talking about what most people have. If we're talking about economics, there's a, there's a, there's a logical choice here. If you're talking about aesthetics, then maybe there's a different choice.
Well, the thing is, the thing is, yeah, and I think, I mean, my position really is often, it's like the appearance of the home. You know, if it is substantially different, you know, um, you know, I mean, that can definitely impact on the valuation.
That's right.
Okay, I.
Just saying.
I wanna see that.
Yeah, that's.
I, I have friends who own a hardy plank clad, clad house, and they're very happy, because they don't have to paint it.
Okay, I know. Well, like I said, you know, we've been in our house for, oh, I don't know, I wanna think how long we've been there. We've been there for a long, 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 long time, and, you know.
And there's here to the other side.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and it's.
It's a free demo to me from that photo.
No.
Yeah, yeah, well, this is, this is bad, this is, okay, that's okay.
So.
It's Chester Street.
Right, so it's. Sorry?
It's that grayish.
It's this one.
Okay.
The, the other thing is, I couldn't tell, are they removing that tree? From my reading of their landscape plans, that tree is gone.
That is, that is, I don't know how to tell you this. That is a street tree.
Is that still, I mean, the house is gone, is the tree still there? I was in no shape to go and look at it.
So we've got big killings ahead.
Because they can't, they can't just take, they can't just take down, they can't just take down a street tree.
This is all theoretical.
Well, um.
Just saying.
Do you wanna talk about concerns? We can go around and start developing a motion, or?
Just, somebody make a motion.
Um, I, I don't know how they're gonna get it from the side without that, because it's gonna create a deeper garage depth, which is going to take up the whole front facade, as right now it's going backwards, right, so it's not square. It's a rectangle, so when you twist it, it's coming across the whole facade of the building. So my thought is actually to leave it as is, because I'd rather have the active space of the front door and the porch, instead of losing that to the garage in a falsified fake window approach. Have it set back. I'm not concerned about the hardy plank for this neighborhood.
So the.
As long as we don't do vinyl like the, like the historical commission also recommended.
Um, the, the tree is planned for removal?
So that's, that's a real red flag.
If you look at the.
Just, just speaking as the chairman of the street.
Yeah, I don't.
Look at the, if you look at the proposed landscape design, it, it's off of that. It's no longer at that, uh, in, you know, in the walkway.
Yeah.
Yep, it's definitely gone.
That's a real big concern of mine, because that's the only mature, they, they talk a lot about trees on the property, but they're actually, the trees that are noted on the actual existing plot plan don't, do not appear on their landscaping.
It, it appears that the, the center of the tree is on private property, right on the line.
So it just goes by the center point, or does it go by the?
It's not the canopy.
It's not, well, no, the, the trunk.
Yeah, no, the, the trunk looks like it's on the center between the sidewalk and the property line. I think if there's a, there's a legal debate, I guess. There, there could be there, I bet you would, but, yeah.
To the ZBA, that the tree that they're talking about removing is partially a town property.
Well, they're also removing mature trees in the backyard, from what I can tell.
Well, but we don't, yes, I guess, depends how many, I guess.
Hey, having dealt with flooding issues in this town for the last twenty plus, twenty, thirty-plus years, you know, I'm.
Uh, does the garage look extra deep? I can't tell, but.
I don't have a scale.
It looks extra deep.
There's plenty, let me.
Yeah, because they're saying set it backward.
There's, um, they've got.
Well, but I think the idea would be just, you can get out of this mudroom, for example, or, um, I mean, there are just all sorts of ways.
The garage is actually not extra deep. Um, there is, if you look on page A two of their floor plan.
Yeah, I'm looking at E two as well.
Unfortunately, there's not a lot of, it looks like it's about maybe twenty-five feet deep.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, I think between their powder room, their mudroom, and whatever, there's a closet in that garage, there's all sorts of stuff. They, they just move it out of the mudroom if you have to, but I, I think even, because I, I do pa-, watch these setbacks, and even if you get like six inches, twelve is better, but, or eight even, whatever, six, twelve, but just some setback of the garage massing.
They have two feet. They have two feet already, in the historical mission.
They've got two feet from the front facade, and.
Why, why am I not seeing that on this? It's here, it's a single plane.
I think that's the over.
Oh, okay.
Maybe that's over in the feed bore, lights, maybe it's outside.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
I mean, two feet seems minimal to me.
Seems minimal or amenable? You get the shot.
Two feet is minimal for a setback. That's almost nonexistent.
Right, okay. Right.
Two feet, no, that's quite a bit for a setback of a garage against the main facade. You will, I mean, that's quite a bit. I mean, I see, I, I'm very attentive to it.
It may be what's common, but I would prefer to see it larger.
Oh, anyway.
I'm fine with it as is.
Yeah, I am too.
Just concerned about the tree, I think the finish is.
Right, so, right now, I, I was trying to put some concerns. Right now, the first concern is the tree on the front edge of the property, maybe a street tree, and should be investigated.
And I wanna support, and I'm hearing Betsy and Heather Hannon at least, that I wanna support the finishes limited to wood. Um, these, it's fine. I think we want a high standard, not the, whatever the low standard is of the street.
Hardy plank is high standard.
What?
Yeah, low standard is vinyl siding.
There's a higher standard, and I'll go again. I've repeated, uh, that most houses in Winchester are still wood.
So, okay, um, we'd say then, supporting then, the historical commission's, um, recommend, two recommendations.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, please.
So as of right now, the two things that we're talking about is the tree in the front should be investigated, and that the, we support the Winchester historical commission's two recommendations.
So, so what about the, do they also recommend, I don't note there, I don't know if this, the trim, they're saying it should not be PVC. Do I read that correctly?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Do I?
So, well, I.
I do have further concerns about the trees in the back they're removing. That's just a concern to me.
So, okay, that could be a third.
To my, to my, to my eye, it looks like they're removing two trees in the back. Let me make sure I get that count right. Yeah, and the, uh, is, is planned.
So, you're, you're, here's the concerns that they should be saved, or that there, that additional plantings should be?
Well, I cannot tell exactly how it, it's very difficult for me to see where it lies on the exist-, on the new plan.
Yeah.
So there's a tree, one tree probably would have to go, the other tree, I don't know if it has to. But they're not replacing any, they're not putting additional trees in the back. From their landscaping plan, they're putting very short perennials up front, in front of the house, and they're not actually replacing any of the trees they've.
You could say, consider, uh, replacement of large shade trees?
Yes, please.
I mean, I don't know what species tree that is.
You can, uh, you can, replacement, you can say replacement of the, of the, of the, the shade trees that are taken down, that are being taken down.
Okay, put a, I would say, put a condition.
I would put a condition, yeah, not just a suggestion.
Right.
Yes, thank you, Heather.
Or replace, um.
I, I realize that, um, in some of ours is that the conditions, we're not noting, we would like this to be a condition to the permit, or.
Correct.
We're just saying, or make recommendations, which gives them mobility to more.
No, but that is, but that, but that is so important.
To replace any mature shade trees on, um, in the rear of the property?
Yeah, replace the mankind.
All right.
Okay, so, this is what I have.
Because, believe me, we have had flood events.
Betsy, we're behind schedule.
I know, we, but we have had many flood events in the past, not in the real recent past, but, you know, and it's very damaging, and anything you can do, and the street trees play a huge role in minimizing that.
Yep.
We're not gonna talk about.
So, we, so, so, yeah, the motion is, so I have one concern, and then two, um, two conditions. This is, this is. Right, it's the tree on the front edge of the property may be a street tree and should be investigated, that's a concern, and then the other two, um, conditions are, we support the WAC's two conditions up there, those are conditions, and then the other, third condition would be to replace any mature shade trees in the rear of the property.
That have been removed.
That have been removed.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what's currently working. If we wanna add anything else, now's the time.
Well, I think we, I think that pretty much covers it.
So someone has to.
So moved.
Do we wanna discuss the motion? We all good? All right.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye, abstaining, no one.
Um, okay, so that was a, Jerry's first, actually, nobody seconded that motion.
Betsy, yeah.
Oh, sorry, sorry?
That's easy.
Correct or second, five oh?
The, the tree lady.
Okay, um, moving on.
Yep.
Um, so, I have a document here, design consultant, so these are based upon the four or five emails that have been sent around. Um, this is, this is.
Hang on, hang on, I wanna back up. You're going straight to the end of the game.
Yes, sir.
I wanna back up and say, because I, I was the one who asked for this, and Heather, thank you for following up, and, but I noticed that, um, I had not been aware of this, but that the zoning board of appeals has an outside consultant, this kind of just came through in a kind of email chain that we got when Brian brought us in and copied us on something. The consultant is, um, from Somerville, and I guess, uh.
Mass housing, I believe.
Recommended him, that's fine, so he's kind of coordinating or orchestrating during our very tight, uh, situation.
Excuse me, what is your consultant for?
Forty B. For the forty B River Street development.
Yes, what, what is his, his expertise?
His expertise, from what I can see, because I looked him up, um, seems to be mainly affordable housing.
So he's the design consultant?
No, 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 he is a general, all-purpose coordinator, advisor for them as they're working through their review, their general review,
Okay.
and ultimately, ultimately their vote at the ZBA for the River Street project.
So who's the guy from the state?
So his name's Ezra, what's his last name?
Ezra comes from the state.
Mass housing, correct?
No, he's in, but he's a, but he's a contractor. He's an independent contractor.
From Mass housing.
I believe he's from Mass housing.
He's from Mass housing.
Well, anyway, Ezra, you don't remember his name?
Haber?
Because it's important, I think, for people to understand. So he comes in, his whole, uh, what, orientation is to, uh, work with communities to build affordable housing. I think it's okay, but when he was given this.
Glenn, Ezra Haber Glenn.
Yeah, Ezra Glenn. So when he was given this assignment, uh, he then, because he's coordinating these four, uh, peer reviewers, he then, uh, I guess with Brian's, uh, received Brian's, uh, recommendation from us, or it's a rec-, received the recommendation from us through Brian, for peer review, outside peer review on design, Ezra Glenn tried to reach Dennis. Well, this was right at the end of October, and I only followed this through the email chain. It wasn't something I was personally told, but I could see, he was interested in getting, um, on board Dennis. Well, Dennis was in the middle of his campaign, and the first week of November, so he was apparent, I, I, I'm deducing, but it was clear he was out to.
We told, we told him that Dennis was not gonna be able to respond until November fifth, so, so we all knew that, but.
Right, but it didn't get sort of stuck in Mr. Glenn's head, apparently, and so then he decided he couldn't reach Dennis, and then just promptly moved along and went and contacted, uh, an architecture firm in Somerville. And this is all in the email chain that we all got. So I'm finally paying attention to this thing, and I Google the firm, um, and I look at their work, and I think, yikes, I don't think it reaches the standard, frankly, I'll be blunt. I don't think it even reaches the standard of what's already on the table for what's on River Street. And this firm does some pretty, in my view, from some pretty, uh, uh, I'll just say, unattractive housing projects. So, this is not, we're, we're trying to elevate this, and we already understood there were some concerns about the design of the River Street project as opposed to what's been submitted versus what we saw earlier on. So with that in mind, this brings up, I think, to big picture concept, when we make a recommendation to the zoning board for any special permit project, and we wanna review, that's peer review on design, that we need to expl-, uh, express explicitly to the zoning board, and then, in this case, it would be through Mr. Glenn, but we need to say that we are recommending so-and-so, and if so-and-so is not available, please contact the town planner, and we will make another recommendations, and that needs to be a boilerplate letter. With that in mind, now, we're trying to figure out if, uh, if it's not going to be Dennis Carlon, that's fine, there are others.
No, yeah, so.
If he's under contract.
Now he's under contract.
Good, thank you.
To, uh, to, um, to Ezra's defense, he wasn't the only one trying to reach out to Dennis, but I was also.
All of us have been in campaigns.
Yeah, no, 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 after, no, we're talking about after the, af-, since November fifth.
Thank you. I give him a big break.
No, and then things, yeah, no, no. No, and then things, yeah, no, you know, surprisingly enough, he got very sick after the campaign.
That's happened to me too.
Yeah, so then he was like, out of commission for twelve days, so.
Oh, my god. I was sick of the election day.
Well, what are you gonna do?
Things, the thing is, I didn't wanna, personally, I didn't wanna move on to any other consultant until we heard definitively that he either was or wasn't. Um, so, I think he was like, well, if we can't get a hold of this guy, I gotta start moving, and he started moving without me, no, without, without me, no, so.
Right, 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 understood, understood.
He actually.
He was ready to hire someone, you know.
They were available, it's, he are way ahead of us.
But, I mean, my concern here is that this, while we can state our, our desire, this is under the Z B A's control.
Well.
But it was based on our recommendation, that's the end.
Well, I, I put this on the agenda not just for, uh, the Z B A's purpose, I put it on for our own.
Yeah, for all.
So it's for all projects.
I, I understand, uh, just this particular one, I think, was, I agree that we should, we should include this language, but I think they were moving on a different timeline than we are able to, so. I, I think there are extenuating circumstances, um, and I certainly, um, as, what is Ezra's last name, please?
Glenn.
Glenn.
Ezra, Mr. Glenn is, he has a very limited role in what he's doing with the Z B A on this particular one, which is as a facilitator.
Right, but if you're facilitating, and we're making a recommendation, I think, and that, first of all.
He's facilitating and, and he's doing things at the direction of the Z B A.
Okay, so you're defending Mr. Glenn, I'm not, so I'm saying this board had a recommendation, and.
I'm saying there were extenuating circumstances.
Well, I don't think so. I think he should have come back.
Luckily, luckily, it all worked, yeah, luckily it all worked out, and now we'll have these other, uh, group of, of consultants that we can refer to in case of, when, you know, when we need them.
One quick question, in this group of consultants, do we have the people, the person who, when we, when we're looking at consultants a few years back?
Eric Dahl.
That's why I said.
That's the person that we.
This is this last one here.
Okay, so he's the one who was up at the same time as Dennis, the last one.
Right, so it looks like these were two Union Studio, well, these were the same, correct, but they were different, um, cause one was, there was two different emails, but, but I, but I believe it's the same, so I don't, I don't think.
Oh, okay. Correct. Correct. Yeah, the top, the upper one's probably better, but if you.
Yeah, I don't think this is necessary at the moment.
I agree.
So, um.
It's, um, Union Studios Architects is, the principal, I believe, is Don Powers.
Yes, oh, you do know, good, good, Heather.
Yes, I do, and L D A is Tref Le Flec.
Right, who, who Dennis used to work with exclusively before, yeah.
Oh, excellent. Yeah. And then principal, you wanna put them, if you're gonna create a document, well, ultimately.
Yeah, well, and this, it's gonna be a much more of a standard.
I think they're all great, including.
I was actually, cause the Union Studios and L D A came from Maury, but I have worked with them in the past.
That's fantastic, Heather. Yeah, no, these are, we're, we're, the two of us are heading in the same direction.
Not.
The, the, I think the only.
Some of us are clueless as to what.
Right, so I think the que- the, the questions.
So let's go for the people who know nothing.
The que- the question really for the, the board in the next eight minutes is, you know, what's the next step in terms of, is there gonna be another time where we kind of all vote that these are, these are, you know, certified? Design consultants that, that, that we'd be willing to work with, something.
If it were to be that, it would it be appropriate for you to, just, is the boilerplate email to all of them and express in it, and how they work?
Definitely, definitely, would, um.
Would this be of interest to you, it would be, um, through?
Continue rates, and. Yeah, that we need the rates, I would say, okay.
Exactly.
I would really like to have interviews with them.
Well, that's another level, but first they gotta be interested, so that's step one.
So, okay, that's, so that's an easy step, one is to approach these firms, and say that we're trying to have a pool of fifty-three G consultants that we could call up at any time. You may or may not be available, whatever, could you please send your rates, um, for, you know, design consultants, um, you know, hourly rate.
Design consultants.
They should understand, I think in the cover letter too, that, um, that, well, it would be, Beth might have some ideas as well, but it seems as if, that it would, uh, maybe it's just understood, maybe not, but with fifty-three G, they do have to move pretty quickly.
Right.
And also, they are fairly low levels, um, budgets, but they can be repeat, um, so it's, uh, be in the, um, in the.
It's a good point.
What, I don't know, I wanna say in the stable, I guess that's okay word, but, um, just in our, um, in our list of recommendations.
Do we have a range of hours for them to understand what the scope would be, or do they do this all the time?
Project based.
Yeah, it is very much pro- so, some of it's actually, uh.
But like examples, or?
There, we could have examples, but really, when it comes down to it, they're gonna always add, they'll give you an hourly rate, but really, what they, what they're gonna give you is a sc- they want a scope of the project.
Right.
Because if it's just, depending on what the Z B A votes on, let's say they want a design consultant to just look at landscape and architecture, but not traffic flow, or, or not necessarily traffic flow, but, um, you know, uh, pa- entrance, you know, exit. Entrance and exit ways for pedestrians, for example, which landscape architects do as well. Um, urban designers do as well, so it's gonna change, it's gonna change with.
Well, yeah. Union Studios is a planning also, if my understanding, Union Studio.
You were both good, but what?
Union Studio Architects is also community planning, in addition to architecture. L D A is architecture and interiors.
Right.
So, like in the C B D, um, if we have, you know, maybe L D A would be more fit for a, um, like the Elm Street project would have been a good fit for them. Um, Union Studios may be more for the Main Street, where we're also dealing with the circulation of the site.
Perfect.
Um, Eric, uh, Don Architects as well.
I just mean, information that we're giving them about the kinds of projects.
Yeah, are we gonna be telling them kind of what they're, what they will be doing?
So they know what they'd be getting into.
Well, I think, I would think that we talked about where we have used design consultants.
Yeah.
Which has, which is.
And examples of what we have used them for, would they be interested in.
Exactly, and so with the example of Main Street, there may be, or larger urban design issues, um, that we'll want addressed.
Such as traffic configuration, like for seven thirty, seven thirty-five, sorry, yes, yep.
For street configuration, street rate. Um, and then on top of that, um, we, I think a cover letter should say that we also con- are encourage, uh, we are recommend, well, we're permit granting, so you'll, maybe you'll wanna say that.
Cause, yeah, it's both, cause we could be C B D or.
So that cover letter might need a few go rounds, cause it's going to be a big, uh, but I think the three of us, but Heather's welcome, you're experienced with this, but. I think we also wanna state that we might, uh, we also contemplate holding withholding money, so that the project can be overseen, um, and reviewed for, before closeout, so I would, uh, I think that's partly what you're saying, scope would be, so sorts of expectations that I have.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, that, that totally makes sense, um, it's in green, ready, ready for me to do.
Good.
Thank you, yeah.
Um.
We can help, but.
Thank you much.
No, yeah, that would be great, um, okay.
Okay, so do we, to send that letter, do we need to have a vote, or are we all, uh, we ha- or directing you to do it?
Um, maybe we'll. Um, mm. Yeah, you're gonna, and if I, yes, if I need help from the, the chair, I, we can figure that out.
Okay.
Of course, no, no, no.
Heather, did you need to look at it, so then we need to bring it back, okay. Is everyone, okay, are you?
Come on, stop.
I would like to see.
Okay, so let's bring it back next week, real quick. So, we'll get, you'll, you'll do a draft, send it to everyone, comment back to Brian, then we'll meet as a planning board.
So, um, also, just a heads up, the, um, the River Street forty B, that they are meeting next, the day after we're meeting, they're meeting on December eighteenth. For design, and that's the first meeting that Dennis is gonna have a report for.
Right.
Which means, that even though it's gonna be just one day before the Z B A, we are meeting next week on the seventeenth, and we need to have a discussion on the design. So we have not had, we've had a very high level discussion about the design, that basically, like, all the thing we said was, there was a very large change between the first round with mass housing, and then the subsequent round with Z B A. They got rid a lot of the brick, and then they did it a more of, either lighter brick and paneling, yeah, so, so it's still some brick, but it's, it's, it looks different, is the point.
So, when you write the memo, um, for the board, the way you make recommendations for special permits, and this is actually a special permit, can you, um, write something about that, so we already are alerted to what you could pick up?
So I, yeah, I already wrote, had written this me- this memo was distributed, yeah, a long time, a long time ago, so I will, yeah, exactly, I'm gonna throw that back in, um, that's, it's unaltered, it has, cause nothing has changed since the origins, original one, so, um. So, yeah, I will have the, um, what I'll put in there is the original mass housing letter that I wrote, and then the Z B A letter that I wrote already, so, um, you guys will see the differences in those. Okay? So, just a heads up, please, get that binder out, it's this thick.
Find my address or.
Um, take a hard look at, we're gonna be solely talking about design, we're not, we're, you know, architecture and design, at that meeting on twelve seventeen.
About meeting? Does it whole meeting?
No, there's.
We won't have time to, to do that.
That Converse, I wrote down, do we have Converse coming in?
Converse is coming, so they were gonna be coming in then, but I now believe they're coming in in January.
Okay, that's better.
That's, yeah, they, they pushed off.
Um, so, just, um, obviously, you're gonna be getting, uh, packets this, this, uh, this week, or, no, sorry, Friday, um, so it'll all be set. Um, but one of the, I don't know how long we're gonna have, it might end up having to be a very efficient thirty-five minutes kind of thing, talking about architecture and design. So, um, just, I'll make this, I'll say it again, that please, please, please take a, a chunk of time to come up with your own.
The more you can reference pages, I know, you know, I don't know, whether it's like A this, or C something, it would help if you can, even if you've got your old memo, or you can just plug in where they are.
Sure.
Cause there's so much, um, you know, frameage and stuff that we're probably not conversant in.
It's a very thick, it's very thick, yeah, yeah, um. Okay.
Okay, all right, so, um, do we have a motion to adjourn, or actually, to?
Yeah, no, it's a, it's an adjourn.
Continuing to a time certain is actually appropriate, too.
Yeah, continue to eat thirty.
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Come on in, um, planning board members, I had. Hi, Winkie, I'm, welcome back, we are continuing with our meeting, um, so from seven thirty to eight thirty, we are going, uh, the master plan steering committee is meeting, um, to, and our consultant will be with us shortly. We're gonna go around the table and introduce ourselves, and everyone in the audience, just so you know, we are on camera, and you are being recorded. I'm Heather Von Mary, I'm chair of the planning board.
Uh, Brian Zakely, town planner.
Uh, Betsy Corrigger, uh, planning board.
Do you have Jerius planning board?
Des Collet, master plan steering committee.
Sherry Winkleman, master plan steering committee, precinct eight.
You're, welcome to introduce yourselves.
John Stevens, I'm an interested observer.
Okay.
John Serbeer from the housing partnership board.
Savannah Nicole Vialba, assistant planner.
Heather Hannan, planning board.
Maureen Meister, planning board.
Pamela Court, master plan steering committee, precinct five.
Um, so, uh, Jennifer Golden will be joining us very, very shortly, she's running a few minutes late. Um, Brian and I thought we'd take this opportunity to talk about, today, we had a meeting with all of the department heads in town at once. It was a, I thought, an extremely productive meeting, we got a lot of information out of all the department heads, and I thought maybe, um, some of the information, I took notes during it, we, I take this time while we wait for Jennifer to come in. To talk about some of the things that were discussed, and how it really was set up is, we all started at the table, um, Jennifer went through the, the schedule, how all the department heads fit into the master plan, and then broke us into different groups of three to four people. Um, and I was an observer, I think you participated, and, uh, Jennifer also was an observer, and then ca- each group was given three questions of, what do you need to achieve these goals, what is unachievable? And what, um, things are, are your thoughts regarding the goals that she produced to them, and she had all the goals that came out through, um, all the stuff that we did in the forum with.
All ninety-seven.
All ninety-seven. Um, and so we all divided, um, and, um, they took notes, and she has all of them, and when we returned, um, it was interesting, cause the way that the groups ended up being, it was actually by more like category. Um, and they, a lot of, there's a lot of similar threads running through all their conversation and their thoughts, um, a lot of support amongst all of the department heads, which I was surprised by on certain topics, so. Um, it's just, cause I know the planning board really wants to know, um, they, there's a lot of discussion about, um, H R, and looking at things through tech lens, of where the technology is gonna go in the next ten years. And how is a town, can we get there with that technology, talking about grant writing expertise on staff that they need to free up themselves. Um, and what would the scope of be of that grant writing expertise, and the focus of the grant writing. The role of the town hall over the next two, ten years, um, a lot more autom- auto- um, automatic in terms of the data collecting, on the technology, payment process, and how, as a role of the town going to go forward with that. And as, they have always been very service minded inside this building, um, looking at, um, still continuing that service, but in a different capacity, and freeing up themselves, because there are less people coming through the doors. Um, they talked about, um, they needed to be a tax base, um, and through the tax base, they would like to see businesses, um, that are specifically tech and medical specific, um. For all sorts of different reasons, came through the conversations, um, there was, uh, talk about health and stress, um, community engagement.
Aging in place.
Aging in place was a big topic.
A big topic.
Um, there was the D P W engineering, they all work together as one group, um, they know that there's a lot of funding of the studies, but very little implementation thereafter the studies. Um, so they would like a stronger process to follow through with all the studies, especially for transportation. They also would like, um, everyone to recognize that they have the things that we plan for as town meeting members, and as government, and thereafter, what is planned for. And with the amount of outcry we heard in town when they closed the youth center and the damage that that did to a lot of our youth to not have that space available to them, that that might actually be something we want to consider of how can we get our youth center and our janks? We, janks is some of the goals in here, how can we get the rec center to be at the level with the janks to support? And I had a very good conversation with the chair of the school committee today to say, alright, either are you willing to let it go or are you ready to take it on? That's really the big question, and if you're ready to let it go, you know, we need, we need you to let go of it. And let it, let them fall under Lisa's, because she has the ability to push them and we're allowed as government to give them the supports they need. Or we, it falls under the school committee and they, even though it's not their mandate, they have to say that this is equally as important to the students of the community. And at the point, they don't have the ability to take it on, so. But they haven't talked to it as a planning board, so that's only the opinion of the chair. And so that's something that I would like to have considered bringing, because that helps. Just from, the health department is talking about the youth outreach is struggling in town, the school is talking about the mental health capacity. There's an increase in drug usage, we know, and so all around that rec center will help so much as we go down the road with the increase of everything else going on. So that might be a goal that we missed, that might be worth considering, but that was brought to my attention today. And the safety officer too, the safety officer right now, right, is under the thumb of the schools, he's in the schools. That is working fairly well, but they're, but they acknowledge that the rec center will help even so much more. Oh, please come to the table, come, join us. Road diets, and what they were saying is a lot of our projects like paving and stuff, those are really rather inexpensive projects. But when you start adding street diets or road diets, the cost increases dramatically thereafter. So when is the appropriate time to add in the diet and when is not? And when we're just paving streets, it's not the right time to do it, and we have to do it more and with our funding studies.
Do you define, do you define that term, because it's.
Some of it is simply just narrowing the street width in order to allow cars to go at a safer speed.
Still sounds as if it'd be a lot cheaper to coordinate that, or there's still paving and.
Still moving curbs, the thing is, is you're moving curbs.
And it's a longer decision process.
Right.
And it's a costly.
Well, maybe it should be more effort should be made to front schedule all of it, so it all happens at once.
I think the, I think through what we've, one thing that the department heads asked was like, what, what's, what, what are we really hearing? Like, what are the three main things that we're hearing? And, you know, one of them, without a doubt, is safety for pedestrians, cyclists and even drivers as well. I mean, so specifically related, not just to traffic, but traffic safety, and that's where this kind of comes in.
What, one of the ideas that was brought up was actually taking it and giving, instead of going through capital, creating a standalone fund for our, for those projects. So they always know that they have extra dollars to work in so that they can plan. So while we're doing the funding of the product, the studies, we then know what we have to work with to complete the actual physical construction of those projects. They asked for some of the stuff with our integration with MBTA to be removed, it's not viable. Business parking, they really felt that that should be a high priority. The building commissioner had a lot of interesting comments regarding e permitting. And that asked that we actually don't go to e permitting, because there are components of the permitting process where, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but what I, my interpretation was, is that you don't get the direct contact with the builders. And when you want them to do something, you have less control over it. When he said that, I asked for clarification at the end, that does not mean he doesn't want online access to our documents. It's that he doesn't want the permitting and the sign offs to happen online. So Mary Ellen helped clarify that. The technology component of access to our documents is not what the issue is, it's actually the e permitting process. There is the trash, the staffing and the removal of the trash. When, even though we're going to online payment, the staff to reconcile it is actually a lot of work still. So even though as we move through online payment processes in town.
Talking about the transfer station.
No, I'm actually talking about everything, so the online payments, there's still a lot of back work behind to reconcile the books and to double check that the payments came through appropriately. And so even though we are going to online payments, it's more convenient for the residents, it's not always convenient for the staff.
Or if, it's not, it's not like a, a, a time efficiency thing for staff, it's pretty much the same amount of time for them, is what they're saying. But it is a convenience for the residents that is important.
Right, so, yeah, I know, so, so as more volume comes through the door, that's where the issue is, potentially.
They, they said it takes about the same amount of time to reconcile the payments as it is if you're doing it.
Well, you're doing it, you're, you're usually doing it at the end of the day, because you're taking, what you're doing is you're bringing up, you know, everything that's happened on the day and then, you know, and then reconciling it at the end of the day. So if something starts, starts to go awry, you know, chances are you're gonna be catching it pretty, pretty darn quickly. Sorry.
The police and fire had a lot of interesting, that's actually who I sat and he's dropped on. Over time, we're gonna have to, we only have one ambulance currently, and we're gonna have to move to two if we continue to grow.
Mostly for mutual aid, right?
So seventy-five percent of their calls for the fire department is actually medical related. And they are seeing an increase in our population for sixty-five and over, which is increasing the medical calls, which is increasing their pull on their staff. There is discussion in some of the strategies about developing Cambridge Street, North Main. Cambridge Street in particular, there's concerns because we don't have our station out there, isn't really up to par to take on new development out in that area. So they would need support there. There was a large support for an economic development department, staff of three at least. Large support for technology advancements, how can we move people in groups? Large support of CPA funding, surprisingly, actually from almost everyone there was in large support of the CPA funding. And I think that's, oh, and the janks came in with talking about shared housing, cohousing and density. And to create more interaction and less separation. But that was standalone comment, and at the very end, we had a fabulous discussion, although it was more me listening, I wasn't part of it. But the staff had a fabulous discussion about, about communication and conversations of how, how as a group can we be better at communicating? And really talking about, out of everyone, everyone would like to have a staff member who is responsible for public outreach and.
Something, I mean, something more than a social media coordinator, without a doubt.
A publicist.
Yeah, well, a communication, a, a communications expert kind of thing. And the other thing was a, they came out of the engineering department with some type of sustainability coordinator due to all of the new regulations with MS four. If you're familiar with that, we won't go into that now, but the idea is that there's gonna be a lot more work related to sustainability, whether we like it or not. So we have to accommodate that.
The one thing that came to my attention, which is kind of something that we haven't talked about, but was, I realized. Is so the rec department was present, the rec director, the intern, intern, intern. And what became clear is that the rec department is struggling. But the residents really want the rec department to be live and to be strong. And not only for the health of our youth and drugs and all sorts of other things, I also talked to the health afterwards. That right now, the way that they're set up with the schools owning their land and directing the buses that can get to the students to them and the access to them is hindering their ability to actually be what the residents want. And so the question was, the schools are coming in one, the rec department kind of fell, there was no way to define in any of the documents or work we did where the rec falls and all that. And I would think with the janks being high up and the schools being high up, the rec actually is up there with it as well. And with the amount of outcry we heard in town when they closed the youth center and the damage that that did to a lot of our youth to not have that space available to them, that that might actually be something we want to consider of how can we get our youth center and our janks? We, janks is some of the goals in here, how can we get the rec center to be at the level with the janks to support? And I had a very good conversation with the chair of the school committee today to say, alright, either are you willing to let it go or are you ready to take it on? That's really the big question, and if you're ready to let it go, you know, we need, we need you to let go of it. And let it, let them fall under Lisa's, because she has the ability to push them and we're allowed as government to give them the supports they need. Or we, it falls under the school committee and they, even though it's not their mandate, they have to say that this is equally as important to the students of the community. And at the point, they don't have the ability to take it on, so. But they haven't talked to it as a planning board, so that's only the opinion of the chair. And so that's something that I would like to have considered bringing, because that helps. Just from, the health department is talking about the youth outreach is struggling in town, the school is talking about the mental health capacity. There's an increase in drug usage, we know, and so all around that rec center will help so much as we go down the road with the increase of everything else going on. So that might be a goal that we missed, that might be worth considering, but that was brought to my attention today. And the safety officer too, the safety officer right now, right, is under the thumb of the schools, because he's in the schools. That is working fairly well, but they're, but they acknowledged that the rec center will help even so much more. Oh, please come to the table, come, join us. Oh, and then they had some other strategies that came out too for traffic and Jen has them all. So, there you go, that's the general, there was so much wealth of information that came out, it was a fabulous meeting and they came in. I asked them all to be blunt when I spoke to them independently and they were, so it's great.
It was a fruitful discussion and that was a very comprehensive overview, thank you.
Well, I didn't want to leave anything out, because I want to make sure the planning board, everyone knows about it as much as possible.
So did that take away from some?
That was great, Heather, yeah, I can skip a couple of slides, no, I, I wasn't gonna be as thorough as you, so that was, that was great, thank you. Okay, well, thank you, I'm really sorry I was late, I made some mistakes in terms of the way I should have gone and roads were closed and it was a mess. But I'm glad to be here, no, you didn't miss anything other than Heather's fantastic update on the department head meeting that we held at eleven o'clock this morning.
We, a few, a few people came in late, so I know we've already done this once, but can we just very super quick go around one more time? So Brian Zekely, town planner.
Betsy Crager, planning board.
Do you have jury's planning board?
Carrie Layton, precinct two.
David Miller, conservation commission.
Jen Goldson, planning consultant.
Jaskolet, precinct one.
Sheri Winkelman, precinct eight.
John Servier from the housing partnership board.
Savannah Nicole Vialba, assistant planner.
Heather Hannan, planning board.
Maureen Meister, planning board.
Pamela Court, master plan steering committee, precinct five.
Heather Von Mary, chair of the planning board.
Alright, sorry, Jennifer, please continue.
That's great, thank you. So we're getting really into the meat today, and I know we don't have a lot of time, so I'm doubly sorry that I was late. But I believe we're ending at seven thirty, I mean, eight thirty rather, is that right? Okay, so, so what I'm gonna say is I'm gonna run us through everything I planned. But it could be that we're not able to make all the decisions that I'm hoping in the time we have. So what I'd encourage you all to do is give it some thought over the next couple of days, I don't have a lot of time. Because we are gonna be writing the plan next week, but if you have things that you want to give a little bit more thought to, look through the document I just handed out. If you could please just, you can just send me individual emails if you want, that's fine. Just remember you can't have a full group discussion on email, so it would be better to either send your thoughts just to me and Heather and Brian or even just to me, it's up, it's up to how you all want to run it. But I just want to put that out there, because I'm gonna go through this relatively fast and I don't want you to feel too pressured to make lots of decisions in the next thirty-five minutes. Does that sound okay? Okay, so I keep saying this over and over again, but the, the whole purpose of where we are in the plan right now is to prioritize and not have, essentially what we have right now is ninety-seven or ninety-eight. I think I counted ninety-seven strategies, and that's too many. So what I'd like to do is talk about narrowing and prioritizing, and I have some ideas. And I hope you don't think that was presumptuous of me, but I wanted to put something on the table for you to consider. I've looked carefully at the public forum results from November. And I've also very quickly processed what I heard this morning at the department head. And I spent the afternoon, that's why this, you're just getting this now, because I wanted to integrate the department heads thoughts into the considerations. So I have gone through all the strategies that we have been talking about over the last few months really and presented at the public forum for feedback. And I've given my recommendation for your consideration only, and I'm not expecting any kind of rubber stamp. I have few that I'd like to discuss, because I wasn't quite sure, the feedback was not clear. And then I have others that I'm suggesting we take out, you may not like that, you may want to either leave it in or rework it. And then I have others to keep, and I actually, I actually have some to add, I didn't put it in my little legend here. But the red is either stuff that I'm suggesting we wordsmith or completely adding some strategies that reflect some of the comments we've heard lately. And so what I'm hoping to get is less strategies than perhaps we have now. I want to quickly review the project schedule and just anchor us into where we are and what's coming up next. I'll also quickly review the forum results, just the main takeaways. And I'm actually not sure, I was at a conference last week and I know Anna and Avery finished the summary of the forum. But I actually don't know, and I realized as I was driving here that I never asked if you all got that. Okay, so I'll make sure, it's, it is done, it was done last week, they must have just been waiting for me.
Also, you did interviews with people on design, with design backgrounds, and I would love to see some sort of, somebody must have taken notes.
We took notes on everyone, and we also interviewed just a few department heads. We put it out to everybody, but just a, you know, I think the timing was a little tough with the holidays, with Thanksgiving in there. And then we also interviewed a couple of select board members.
How many did you, how many?
Total with the innovator? Oh, the select board was just two. The third tried to contact me and it was really my fault, I didn't actually see that he had signed up. And so we were trying to record.
He had signed up like a few minutes before.
Yeah, I looked at one thirty and I think he signed up at one thirty-one for a two o'clock appointment and I didn't look back again, so. Yeah, so we have raw, we have raw notes, I'm just trying to think of the best way. Okay, we can talk about that, yeah.
I think something that we can take away, it might not be trying to make it all consistent.
I wonder if we, I wonder if we combine all the raw notes into a document that you, because we did give an, the impression, I don't know that we said it explicitly every time, that these were anonymous and they could tell, yeah. But I wonder if we kind of combine everything into kind of just a running list? Okay, okay, I'll, I'll give that some thought. No, it was very helpful and I'm glad that you suggested it. Okay, so I'll review the forum results very briefly, and I don't have to go too much into the department heads now, but I did mention a few key takeaways. And then we'll spend the rest of the time going through what to do about the strategies and what the recommendations are that I've given you tonight. So we are at the end of phase three. And we're spending the rest of the month writing the plan and we'll give you the first draft of it on New Year's Eve or before. So that's why tonight is such an important meeting and the next few days getting back to us quickly so that we can really capture a first draft that even if it's going to be changed, at least you feel pretty good about it and that it's captured the essence of what you're hoping for. Then we head into phase four in January and we'll meet with you on the fourteenth. And we'll ask for your feedback on the draft before that. And I'll give you, I've, that's on a Tuesday, I think, so if you could plan to give us feedback the Friday before, that would be helpful to us so we can look at everything that you're looking at. We'll give you the comment matrix again, just like we did before. And then we'll revise after that based on your comments and submit you a revised draft by the end of January. Then we, it'll be ready for release for public comment, public hearing on February tenth. And we'll revise again. and we'll revise again. And then, uh, you have one more meeting in March on the tenth before the Planning Board, uh, hopefully will adopt the plan at the, uh, March twenty-fourth meeting.
Amazing.
So that's everything we've talked about, but you can see we're getting closer and closer and it's really all happening right now. Any questions on the schedule? You've seen this before, but, um, okay. Alright, so the Public Forum results, so first of all, thank you, we were so pleased with the evening. We thought that the turnout was decent, you know, sometimes you wish there'd be three hundred people, five hundred people, but we got, we counted, some people didn't sign in, but outside of the committee members, we counted about fifty people.
That's not bad.
Yeah, I didn't think it was bad at all. Um, but the thing that I was really happy about was when we went through, we went through and basically transcribed every single Post-it note, um, and, you know, marking on the, the dot votes that we, and we were really pleased with the, the breadth, but also the depth of responses. People were really thoughtful and they took a lot of time to comment. And I got a lot of, um, great input, you know, really on every single strategy that we presented. And it was a lot, it was ninety-seven strategies that we had up around the room. And people really spent the time and, um, and gave us their comments on it, so. Uh, so, we were very pleased with that. Um, some of the main conclusions, um, you'll probably remember we had high ranked, we separated out into things that have been consistently higher ranked, lower ranked, and then things that we saw divergence and we asked a bunch of questions to probe around, um, the differences that we saw in the community's feelings on those. And so, the high ranked goals, people were, again, you know, generally supportive, had, they hadn't seen strategies before. Um, we did find that three of the strategies in the high ranked goals had some mixed opinions, um, providing any kind of tax or financial incentives to attract in different industries and businesses. We had a few different strategies around that, so we'll talk about that tonight. Um, tree protections, more on the private property. And so I think that really that just needs more clarity, um, around what that means and you talked a little bit about that a few minutes ago. And then road diets, I think that people had mixed feelings about what does that do for, you know, the roads are already congested and this will slow tr- so it's the typical kind of, uh, conflict, um, when you talk about traffic calming or road diets or whatever term you use. And not to say that those things should be taken out, but, um, but you'll see that I did take some of those out, so we'll talk about if that's what you want. Low ranked goals, we didn't actually offer strategies. Um, there, there were two reasons for that. One, we felt like we had so many strategies they were already weighing in on and those were lower ranked goals to begin with. And second, um, is that a lot of those lower ranked goals are supported by strategies that we had can, come up with for other goals, because a lot of the goals are related to each other. Um, and then divergent goals, we found that participants were generally supportive of the strategy ideas and there were a lot of them. Um, but the, the things, the four things that got the most mixed opinion were using public fu- again, it was related because the hi- some of the higher rank goals, some of these things overlapped. Um, using public funds to create incentives and attract private businesses. Um, reconsidering that stormwater bylaw was very controversial. Um, and, uh, and we had just thrown this out, you know, sometimes I throw out things that I think will probably be controversial, but I like people to dig in a little bit. Um, so we, we said what about managed retreat in, um, in flood prone areas, buying up private properties? Costs money, it's, you know, expensive, where's the funding source? It's a lot of questions around that, um, but that was definitely a more controversial one. Um, and, uh, and I don't think the protecting threat into historic structures was as controversial as the managed retreat, but we had put them kind of s- in a similar, um, uh, light in, on those boards.
Say, I was surprised by it and I do think that it was the perception of people there that this came from the Planning Board, so I guess I thought that was, no, it was.
Oh.
It had a negative impact, uh.
Yeah, maybe I should have made that clear that actually none of these ideas came from the Planning Board. They came from either the people in the community or things that either my consultant team came up with, yeah.
Trying to make sense, I'm sorry, I might get in the language, high ranking goals, yet it's got mixed opinions.
Few of them, yeah. So the high ranking goals, they were high ranked from previous.
Okay, that's the way, it's going into the meeting was high ranked.
And then we added strategies for them to comment on. And most of them people liked, but a few of them were more controversial.
Do you have a sense of the demographics of the fifty?
It's a good question, we didn't ask any demographic questions, I mean, you, you, a lot of, you were there.
Yeah, it was skewed a little bit older.
Skew the results.
They all like pizza, right?
Free, free is good, right?
Yeah, free is good.
Um, and then the last one we had, uh, you know, we hear this from time to time, oops, I didn't mean to bring that up, it'll disappear in a minute, I'm sure. Um, delivery of town services and look at potential reorganization and some people latched on to that, but, you know, most actually didn't. Most kind of turned that to, we do need better communication, um.
Don't bring up the topic of trash pickup.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I'll go over this very quickly. Um, we did this, uh, discussion, I don't know if you already went over this Heather in the beginning?
A little bit, but these three questions weren't exactly said, so.
Okay, yeah, and these were what we asked, that, we had given them homework two weeks ago where we gave them all of the strategies and the goals and we asked them to fill out worksheets, um, two, two worksheets actually. We asked them to look at the goals and tell us if they had any ideas for metrics that they felt were measurable and we asked if they actually have baseline data or not for each one and, um, and then we also gave them another worksheet, this was just before Thanksgiving, where we gave them all the strategies and asked them to fill out any that were applicable to their department really. Um, ideas around how it could be implemented, if there was capacity to implement it, where funding would come from, if there's funding needed, uh, what a timeline and any sequencing, um, so really we're looking at how to create an action plan and getting there. So they did those worksheets and we didn't go over them in detail today. What we did was we really focused them in on these three questions and they worked in small groups together. Um, where is capacity lacking to implement any of the strategy ideas? And, you know, we knew that they would focus in on their own departments, but we wanted them to talk to each other as well. Um, what are some ideas for overcoming any capacity gaps? It could be more staff, more funding. Um, and then we also asked them about what ways could implementation be coordinated for maximum efficiency? And we didn't get a ton of feedback on that, but I just wanted to put that in their mind too, that if they saw any opportunities, especially talking with each other across, you know, interdepartmentally, um, to kind of be looking out for those. And then, so I really boiled this down, um, so some needing additional capacity, economic development staff or even a department, um, uh, grant, grants writer staff or grants coordinator, they use both terms. Uh, sustainability coordinator, communications coordinator. And then they talked, some departments including transportation and some of the other, or engineering rather, talked about funding and, you know, that all tied back to the grants writer. But they also talked about CPA, as Heather had mentioned, and there was actually quite a bit of support in the room, it seemed. Nobody really spoke out against the idea.
There are a lot of naughty heads, yes, yes.
Um, and then, uh, we did, I did ask them, are there any strategies that they would basically nix? Because they either weren't feasible for some reason, like they couldn't figure out how to get, you know, reach that gap or fill that gap for capacity? Or they were problematic in some way, um, in terms of enforcement or other externalities, service needs or what have you. Or they're already underway and part of a way to minimize what is in the plan is to look at taking out things that you're already doing and that you are already committed to doing. And so I started to do that tonight as well, or this afternoon. I'm just gonna keep on blasting through so we can get through. Okay, so I have two that I wanna dive into a discussion on and I italicize those in this document. I am proposing seventeen for deletion, but you may or may not like all the ones I deleted, you may wanna just rework some of them. Um, eight for possible addition, and I almost hated to put additional ones, but as I looked through all the public feedback at the forum and then some things that the Department Head said, I thought, well, I should at least present these or maybe they could be sort of wrapped up into other, oh no. And then I. And then I'm proposing two for substantial rewrite.
We're all flipping, so could you answer the question, are those in here or not?
They are, but they're not in that order, but my slides are in this order, yeah. Um, these are kind of coded in my little weird system with italicized and red lines and, yeah. Okay, oop, okay, so the first one is around Cambridge Street. Um, and so some of this was flagged as unrealistic, that there's not enough potential here. Um, also flagged as problematic in terms of it being, um, Mass DOT and coordination in terms of transportation improvements, but really this focuses more on private development opportunities and zoning. And so the way we wrote it tonight, and this is, you haven't really seen it worded exactly like this and I, I did redline it on this document so you can see what we changed, but this is coming from my subconsultant team, um, just to, to clarify it. So undertake a study, clarify desired outcomes, key develop, redevelopment sites, and I've shown sort of the area I think we're talking about in terms of Mahoney's up through maybe the Elks Lodge, I'm not, I'm not sure if you go that high.
Yeah, we do.
And, um, understand the real estate market, um, identify, create design guidelines. And that could include street design guidelines, working with Mass DOT. Um, and then examine the transportation infrastructure issues, you know, some of these are just tied together. And then amending zoning, and so we didn't feel like we had enough answers to advise you on how to amend the zoning at this point. Um, and then we just added, and this is a longer strategy, which I'm not crazy about. Some of this can, we could format this differently and put some of this in a explanation, but we wanted to just make sure that we were clarifying, there's a lot of residential neighborhoods right all around this corridor. So we wanted to be sensitive, um, when you're looking at, you know, redevelopment options and redesign, um, and design guidelines to just look at buffering and how you integrate that into your, into your planning. So that's what that whole last paragraph is about. So I guess my question for you is, you know, uh, some people have said, oh, these uses are never gonna go away, why bother planning for them?
It's a high risk right now, because the way Mahoney's, the Planning Board's talked about it and, I think, chime in. The Mahoney's right now is zoned for single families, so if they went to sell, it goes all to single family lots or forty B or something, so. Um, and Bonnell Motors is a lot of land as well, if for some reason they go to e-online car sales or some, whatever they do. They're, they're very stable in terms of businesses, both of them, but right now it's not zoned, so if any of them choose, um, to change or even Mahoney's has extra land in the front that they could sell off. Um, so it's been something that kind of hasn't ever come to the forefront, so it got brought up.
Yeah, because I think, because most, I'm speaking for my neighbors here, my neighbors in Mahoney's, they live two hours down from me. I mean, they are, they are very committed to the town of Manchester. I mean, yeah, so I think you fact, need to factor that into the mix as well.
Yeah, it's just changing the zoning so we're ready if someone wants to sell their business.
It's thinking long-term, yeah.
And it did happen with the pansy patch, because that was not, and I have to say, as the person who definitely picked this up, it was all but explicit on the part of the attorney representing the developer, that if we didn't, um, it was, that was zoned actually for single family, but if we didn't get with the program and basically let them do what they wanted to do, uh, they would press a, uh, move along with a forty B. Well, that could have actually gone to commercial across the street or mixed use because, and actually tried to work with the Mahoney's, which has a commercial component. I mean, it just hadn't, we had no, we had no opportunity because the zoning was there for a single family.
So it's something that's a high priority of the Planning Board, it may be low priority for residents, because it's not gonna have much impact in them, but it's something we need to prepare for, so it's something we have to do as a Planning Board.
Can I make a statement about that? It just, it seems like when things happen in town and then town officials react.
We're trying to be proactive.
You end up having, you have people in town, residents saying, that's not a high priority because we have all these other fires that we need to deal with and, and handle, and then something happens and we haven't done any of the background work to be prepared for it and then we react in a way that might not be ideal and then everybody all of a sudden is pointing fingers at every town official.
Right.
Um, many of whom are volunteers.
They're sitting here right now.
And they end up.
Except for Heather, she's getting paid, no.
And they end up getting yelled at, why didn't you do a better job? And it's exactly for this reason, it's sort of, that if we, if, if we're not proactive and we're not anticipatory and these kinds of things happening and how we're gonna handle it, it's a disaster for later on. People are whining about forty B now, why didn't they plan better? Because they were putting out a bunch of other fires and nobody else wanted to deal with it back then.
Literally no staff.
There's no staff to help us.
So sad.
Anyway, this is more of why it's on here is, we know we have to take care of it, it's not, it'd be nice to have it just.
One thing I see missing though, I would love, because I, every time, which isn't too often these days, but go down Route sixteen through Wellesley and I just think this is a state route and it's so much nicer, um, and it's got pedestrian routes.
Right, exactly, and in Wellesley they're able to get, um, it is, uh, I mean, they have the same thing we do.
We have Ambrose School and kids going to McCall and going to the high school and just penetrating Cambridge Street. So I don't see anything explicit there, but that really to my mind would be a very high place. And, yeah, I don't know what's gonna happen with the nor- the forty B on the northern end, but we've got, uh, denser residential coming there, I think, safe to say, no matter what. So, um, we need to design that Cambridge Street for road access and I, I would like to put that as non-zoning. That one's going to go back toward friends with the budget that we were just talking about.
You mean the Church Street intersection?
It can be higher up too, yeah, it should be several points, um, and again, it's like Wellesley did it, so we can too. And it's a state route, uh, the argument's often made, oh, well, that's the state route, it's, it is a.
So this would impact the nursing home as well?
Uh, nursing, uh, gable, that's not a nursing home, excuse me, but it's.
It's assisted living.
So is that not covered under number four, is that extra to number four?
Well, I think it's.
She's saying it's not on the map because that stops at Wildwood, right? Like you wanna go further, you wanna go further south?
Oh, okay, so go further.
The whole thing, it all should be, it's all in.
I would definitely caution against not having, especially in a, a ten-year plan. I mean, Bonnell is very stable and Mahoney's is very stable, but if, if for some reason the people running Mahoney's, you know, end up in a market basket type family squabble, who knows what could happen there? Or if Ford, who knows with the auto industry, um, things can change very quickly and companies can go bankrupt and who knows if Bonnell might, because they're based on Ford, I mean, it could be that Bonnell is very stable. I think if we don't think about what could possibly happen in ten years and we're not prepared for it, it's gonna come back and bite us in the ass.
So I do wanna move on to the next one, but ideally, would you want to see preserving the commercial tax base? Would you wanna see mixed, yeah?
Yeah, commercial.
Well, we all agree.
To the extent we can, yeah.
Yep, commercial.
There's one other that if we're talking about the whole quarter that should be looked at, because, and I probably just turn around, but the, um, the country club?
Okay.
What about the country club?
Just, we need to look at.
Including that in this, in the area.
Large site that, um, again, it's, nobody's going, it right now looks good, but you just, we're wanting it with zoning.
I mean, I know, I know people have said commercial around here, but some of these properties would be perfect for large scale housing developments as well.
So. I guess, given we do have this, uh, those are large sites that we're talking about and Mahoney's is commercial, Bonnell is commercial, so I think moving property that's not commercial into commercial is not likely to happen, so I guess, I don't know, maybe the Planning Board will ultimately have to take a vote before the master plan.
No, I was just saying, I was gonna vote for mixed use. A lot of people around here said commercial.
We are so low on commercial in town.
That's my, no, that's true, that's true.
But if Bonnell goes and whatever we zone it for, just keep it commercial.
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 Yeah.
But then we put, just.
Commercial.
Right now a single family.
And actually, it might even grow up more, who knows as time goes on.
Um, okay, we'll go to the next one, sorry.
Hard to know.
We haven't talked about it really.
Okay, the next one, and there's only two of these that are more the in-depth conversation. Um, so I think people just didn't really understand district improvement financing. Maybe they thought that it was, you know, taxing them, but it actually isn't. So we had this in there, um.
Page five.
And, oh, thank you, yeah, page five. Um, and so basically the way a district improving financing work is you can, if you, you know, declare a certain area a diff, you can project how benefits that, you, you know, improvements that you wanna fund will, uh, increase the tax revenue, because the property value will go up because of improvements that the town wants to fund. And you can basically borrow against that projected tax increase. Um, so that it doesn't actually raise anyone's taxes directly, but then you can borrow funds and then the town can make improvements, whatever it is, it could be streetscape improvements, it could be other, it's usually physical infrastructure improvements. Um, and then people's property values will go up in that district and you pay off the debt, um, of borrowing from that increase. and you pay off the debt of borrowing from that increase.
Is there a Massachusetts, you know, golden example?
We could come up with some examples, if you wanna keep it in. There's, I mean, there's, a lot of the examples are more kind of gateway city areas. But we could find a more comparable one, I think, I'll break on the case, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, it sounds, it sounds exciting.
Yeah.
I think people would be interested in learning more, learning more about it, just because it's not something that we've ever talked about, ever.
Ever.
In Manchester. But it has my interest piqued.
And so, there are probably a few areas you could think about it. Do you have an air, you know, North Main, maybe?
North Main is, North Main is in lights right now.
That's what I thought, too.
For, yeah.
So, by districts, you say districts to borrow funds. That implies that it's the property owners in the district which can borrow. So, it's not something that the town borrows?
No, the town borrows it, you draw the boundary of wherever you're wanting to basically have the district. And then you borrow funds.
You mean the town.
Meaning the town, sorry, meaning the town.
Against the revenue.
Against the projected future revenue.
It's written as the districts borrow funds, and you're.
Oh, I see.
It does, yeah.
The stack could be.
So, I'm just wondering, who actually gets the money? It's the town?
I believe it's the town.
It's not the individual.
But it doesn't, if you actually look at the second one, I think it says the district, because you're restricted to use it in the district, so you probably have to keep it separate. But then if you don't use it to pay the debt service, you know, like if you have money left over, then you could put it in the general fund.
So, this is different, for instance, from one, a business district where individual members.
Correct.
Interesting, it's not really future tax revenue increase, it's future tax revenue period.
I think it's the increment, the difference.
It's the revenue that's generated by having created this.
That's my understanding.
You're not raising anybody's taxes, you're just creating something that didn't exist before, a collective taxes.
Correct, I mean, the taxes will.
You're gambling on appreciation.
Exactly.
That's how risky it is, that's why I wanna, yeah.
Well, right. The value of the properties go up, and therefore you collect incrementally more taxes.
And you hope that you can determine whether the value has gone up because of improvements versus some.
No, it doesn't matter why it went up.
Yeah, okay, I'd love to see some successful implementations elsewhere.
Yeah.
Okay, so what we wanted to do when we write up this, the plan is give you some case studies, too? And we can talk about how or if they're also integrated into the plan itself, 'cause we're also trying to balance making this straightforward and streamlined and not too heavy with text. So, it could be that we, we'll think about that and you can advise us.
Yeah, I mean, eventually, this might just get taken out. I, I don't, I, I mean, I don't know, but it's, it seems like it's, it's something that's new, that like, I don't know enough about this. It seem, it seems like it should at least.
So, we'll, we'll put it in this first draft and give you more backup information, whether the backup information is incorporated in the draft plan or separate. We'll determine that as we go.
Okay.
Is that okay?
You had something to say?
Jennifer, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
The town has just created a municipal housing trust.
Yes.
And one of the challenges for the trust is to come up with funding sources. You've said this is only applicable to commercial areas. Why is it not also applicable to multifamily residential area?
Yeah, it's not only applicable to commercial areas, but that's where it's used mostly, because that's where, that's, yeah.
Couldn't it be used for?
Maybe, if you saw a benefit.
For rental housing development?
I mean, you'd still have to create a district, so you'd have to think about an, an area of the community that could include residential properties or development sites or redevelopment sites. It's more common to do this in commercial areas where you do, you know, you'll fo, you'd probably focus on streetscape improvements, maybe traffic coming, other things that kind of benefit the public realm, usually. It's not, it doesn't mean you can't do it in residential areas or multifamily, areas of multifamily properties maybe would be appropriate. But the examples that I've seen have been commercial areas.
Yeah, like creating a park, creating an open space that's near, I mean, that no doubt increases property, residential property value. That's like a no-brainer, but it seems like that could be something that could be easy, but if you have the land.
Okay, so let's keep going. So, I have, I think, let's see, three slides I'm flagging for deletion. Not slides, but, well, I have three slides with multiple strategies. And I've, I've stricken them, I don't know what you say, striked them?
Struck.
Struck them in the document here. But I, I took out utilized tax or other financial incentives to attract more professional offices, medical and small tech. People didn't, at the forum in particular, really didn't like the utilizing public funds to support the. The same thing, same reason for the second one before, utilizing tax or other financial incentives to attract green industry. C nine, I ended up taking out for a couple of reasons. One, the department has pointed out a number of issues with green roofing that make it maybe not as practical, and it may not, in terms of priorities for looking out over the next ten years on what will have the biggest impact on meeting your sustainability goals. This seems like one of the more minor strategies that would have less of an impact, because of the complexities of the roof structure, being able to support the weight or other externalities that happen, like rodents or water issues and mold.
I have challenges like stamps with one on top of my roof.
So, you can tell me to put these back in, but that's why I, I took it out.
E twenty-one, it wasn't, it's not adopted tree bylaw, it's adopt tree zoning.
Yeah, so.
Special permit and site plan.
Yeah, so I think what we need to do is change the language instead of take that.
Restriction or something, or oversight.
Site plan and special permit.
We do have some tree-related bylaws already.
Okay.
Why is the tree went on there, where people didn't like it?
People didn't like the idea of, you know, some tree ordinances affect any tree over certain caliber on private property, no matter why you're taking it down or what. You know, you have to basically, some people take it down anyway, but you're supposed to ask for permission, like a building permit.
We will be talking about that. Tree bylaw, by the way.
Commission's bringing it forward to this planning board, but.
That, what I just said.
What the staff said is they'd like to see it through the special permit and site plan through, for construction. So, if you're pulling a permit, it triggers that, not through if anyone just.
But we would like to see it, I thought.
No, 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 it's, it's pulling a permit, I think is the entry point.
And so, so if we do put, keep it in and we talk about it, the bigger issue is the staffing to manage that. And there is no, right now, mechanism to staff.
I would say the biggest issue is town.
It's not even town, either, if we go and we don't have the staff to implement it, then it's.
Which is more of a challenge, but they're, okay.
There's a conceptual challenge and a practical challenge.
Yeah, okay, so what I'm gonna do.
We can start with the site plan.
Oh, reword it and keep it in, and then you'll have more time to vet it after.
I wanna make a comment on E twenty-one, because we have a beautiful, large tree in the house lot behind us. As new owners have come in, they have re-landscaped that lot in a way that is guaranteed to kill that tree. And it's very sad.
It's not a direct.
They're not, yeah, they're not.
Because they're very short-sighted.
I think we.
They, they, they think they're improving the lot, but one of the things, side effect, is they're killing the tree. We've talked to some tree experts, and they absolutely agree.
Yeah.
And then, then what will happen also is in that they will end up, they will end up with water in the basement.
Yes, yes.
Guaranteed.
Yes, okay. So, again, give me comments in the next few days, let me just keep going with these. If I can do this, okay. People talked about MBTA, you don't have a lot of control anyway, so why not have a priority? Bus access, that's another MBTA, you know, issue in terms of changing routes. And there were other things that get people to open space and rec in alternative modes in the strategies. This was something you're doing anyway, so I struck that. This was something that would cost money, and it would support private entities, so I took that out. This one, Plan for Strategic Managed Retreat was controversial. Integration of, oh, basically, the town, some of the comments I got from the department is, we're, you're already doing this. You're already coordinating the open space and flood mitigation, so I took that out.
So, ML, the smart routes to school is not something that people don't like?
No, it's just that the town's.
We're working on it.
Already working on it. To working on it, so putting it in here is redundant, yeah. If I, if I put everything you're already committed to doing.
To say, continue to do.
Should that be a separate list, though, so if someone didn't know we were already doing something?
Well, I've, I've done that for plans before. The trick is, it would, if we did a separate list, it would need to be comprehensive. I wouldn't wanna just pick and choose a few things that I happen to know about, which I'm not saying it's impossible, but I would definitely want it to be something that's comprehensive. These are all the things you're already doing.
Perhaps it would fit into one of the strategies, probably with communication, that the town should make an effort to advertise and centralize.
Of what they're already doing.
All of those types, those things that they're doing.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
I like the idea that the master plan would say, "We support these initiatives that are underway, in case they were to be removed."
Exactly, I think that, I think that's actually a really good idea, because I think there's a lot of things that we are already doing, which is the product of a lot of work that's taken place over the last, say, fifteen, twenty years. And, you know, to the extent that people can be aware of that, I think that's great. But I think we just need to be a little more careful about how we present.
All right, well, let's, let's keep that on the table, I, I noted it. And for the plan you're gonna see in a few weeks, I'm not gonna do that. Not because I don't think it's a good idea, but just 'cause I wanna focus on the new things.
Exactly.
So, to add and rework, there's, I think, two slides here. We didn't specifically call out Washington and Swanton Street. We didn't specifically call out every single potential redevelopment site. We focused more on areas. And I just wanted to make that transparent. If you want us to call out specific sites like that, we can do that. But that would definitely work against our goal of minimizing.
But you do specifically call out Cambridge Street.
Yeah, I call out like, I call out corridors, like Holton Cross, North Main.
There are other, there are other commercials.
That site, I think has to be named.
There are other commercial businesses on Washington Street.
Encouraged development.
It's not as concentrated in one.
So, do you want me to talk about the, that corridor, the Washington Street corridor?
It is currently being done, the encouragement, the problem is it's stuck with the family, and the family is having, so.
But regardless, I think the master plan has to name that there's an effort to encourage develop. I just think it, it could be a sticky note that goes out on everyone's copy, but if we ignore that site on the master plan, it's gonna be a bird in the saddle for the rest of our lives.
That would go to the economic development component. So, it could fall under when you're talking about the economic development.
It's, it's, it's part, I mean, there are other commercial sites along Washington Street. This just happens to be the largest one.
Jennifer, can you, to help me, how are you dealing with multifamily housing in, in these strategies? 'Cause it doesn't jump out at me at all.
We didn't call out sites, we, but we talked about integrating housing options and listed different housing types. And I'm not gonna talk about that tonight, because it wasn't, it actually wasn't controversial, believe it or not. So, we kept it in the same way. But it's in, in this document.
Where is it identified in here?
Yeah, there's a section on.
OPQR.
Thank you. So, around O.
But which ones, which ones of those are dealing specifically with multifamily housing?
Yeah, the one, OPQR five is talking about expanding where townhouses to family and multifamily, including garden apartments, to increase housing option. And that is really directly from the HPP, to be consistent. But we didn't specifically say.
I viewed that as a very small-scale multifamily, as opposed to larger-scale multifamily.
Well, I didn't specify. So, that, I think, in terms of that level of comment, email me.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Again, we, I guess I, I'll be the one to say this, that this board has to discuss, our board has to return to our meeting.
Yes.
Concerned about being here eleven o'clock.
So, I would say the same thing for all of these. If you think any of these should be added, I did include them in red in this, so they'll stand out.
Yep.
And I kind of stuck them where I thought they would be appropriate. But tell me if you, you know, what your feelings are on those.
Is this, has this been electronically sent?
No, I can, though, yeah.
I think probably the highest chance of success.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll send it out as a Word document, and you're welcome to redline it if you want to, or whatever's easiest for you.
Redline, the redline?
Sure.
For those of us without Word.
Yep.
And, and you'll put a hard, I'll put a hard deadline?
Yeah. Friday.
Whatever it is that you need, just tell us.
I'll send it tomorrow, today's Tuesday. So, I'll send it tomorrow morning, or tonight, when I get home. And if you could get it back to me Friday, you know, by midday, let's say Friday noon, is that realistic?
About Monday at nine AM?
How about over the weekend? I'm really crunched, I'm really crunched for time.
You're going really into draft mode.
I understand, I just personally don't have tomorrow or Thursday evening to look at.
Could you do it anytime over the weekend?
I can certainly do it by Saturday evening.
That'd be great, thank you.
One question I have about the very last one, is whether that's moving into the school department, but maybe not, anyway.
No, that's the rec center, that's what the rec center was talking about, so it's the rec and the Jinx.
Is there a way to clarify where that's heading? 'Cause I read it as what's happening for the third graders.
I read it the same, yeah, making explicit that.
You've got other, there are other ways.
That it's not talking, although it's school-aged children.
It's youth, it's youth wellness and create safe spaces. It's going to like the youth center and the rec center, so we change it from student to youth.
So, just to Jen, please, clear your thoughts.
I was gonna say.
Well, the Jinx is in there, the Jinx is in here.
Those, I don't know, they.
My comment was to join the two.
Yeah, like, this, this one is a new one that I added, about Jinx and rec department and lifelong learning center. You could change this around, but that's something that I heard.
We put K one and UVW. Yeah, I would, I'd say we put K one and UVW.
Little five minute break real quick before we open up the planning board meeting. Alright, welcome back. We are going to call the planning board meeting back into session. This evening, the rest of this evening, we are talking about our budget. And at the very end, we'll be approving minutes for our meeting. And Lisa Wong, the town manager, is supposed to be joining us. However, her child is sick, so she's actually going to be calling in. But I would prefer that we, since make her time as efficient as possible, given what's going on, why don't we have a conversation? And I told her that about ten minutes, we'll call her and have her brought into the conversation a little bit. So, Brian brought to the table our budget, starting all the way back from fiscal year eighteen. And let's have a conversation about where we are, where we wanna go, what we need. To really do all the things that are coming down the pipeline that we've discussed with the master plan, with your department. And, and come up with a thing and I.
It's, yeah, it's a little bit difficult to kind of integrate the master plan in terms of funding because we're still developing, we're still developing the plan. And there's not a lot of money associated with projects yet.
Can you, before we start, could you identify what these four pieces of paper in front of us are?
Sure, those are just our previous budgets. So, FY twenty, FY nineteen, eight, and eighteen and seventeen.
And we have.
And then the, there's, the only thing that looks different is that that is our current.
We've got a paper that goes back to FY fifteen.
Oh, that was probably the seventeen one.
And it seems to be overlapping with the sixteen and seventeen, which is also overlapping with the eighteen.
So.
This is my confusion is there seems to be information spread across multiple ones and I don't know what I should look at.
I think the easiest thing to do is look at the most recent one, which is the FY twenty, and we just look at twenty nineteen eighteen for now.
Okay.
I think that's probably the easiest.
That's the easiest.
The first page, the top.
Yeah, so this.
This is the page which is.
Yeah, we're gonna look at that and the other thing, so we're gonna be looking at two things right now that makes the most sense. One is looking at the FY twenty nineteen eighteen, so looking for the past three years, and the other is a snapshot currently of exactly where we are right now. Which is, it's a print off from Munis that shows how much percent, yep, so, so percent of the, our funds that are left in each of these categories.
Okay.
So, what we had previously done was we looked at each of our requests from just one year ago. That, this is what we've done every, we look at the previous year and then when we look where we are currently in that Munis sheet in terms of how we're spending our money. And whether or not it's enough to cover what we think is coming down, down the line. Typically, we just go line by line and say, okay, are we having a discussion about this or not? So, we can start with professional in terms of staffing and kind of go down the line. I would, so, I don't know if, I, I think most of this is actually pretty perfunctory. You know, you kind of just go down the line. Okay, I've, in terms of computer supplies, stationary, all that stuff. It's just.
Right, right, right.
So, what we, I think, what you need to do is we, we do need to have a detailed discussion about potential staffing in terms of. Getting someone potentially on board that, that is in-house for design. Or whether we're going to be having out some more professional services money for, for someone who's not in-house but on, but like. Technically, a consultant. It's a question of where's that money gonna go? And out, outside of that, I'm not really seeing a lot of major changes. But please, I'm totally, you know, this is supposed to be an open discussion so that we can make decisions at our meeting next time.
Okay, I have one more clarification. Do we ignore the FY twenty request column and just simply focus on FY twenty request with override?
No, because the ones that we requested for the override were for, here, a full-time planner, a grant writer and a, and this CEO.
So, which.
So, I would just use the FY twenty request.
And so, just ignore the one with override?
And exo, ignore the override because our override requests were taken out.
Some of us recall.
Right. So, it's, there's no, that, that's not the budget that got approved even, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, the grant writer, when we talk to Lisa, we'll make sure that she's coming in with that under her, her department or as a townwide grant writer.
That makes sense.
So, these, these three have been placed, my brain is really not.
That's okay. So, we, we had originally asked for these three, these three positions to, whether either to be in our, in our depart, our department.
Right. Or elsewhere.
Or elsewhere. They all.
They all support.
They, none of them happened.
So, they haven't been funded at all?
Zero.
Okay.
This is my, okay.
Nothing got funded.
I have a question. Are these numbers including benefits?
The seventy-five full-time planner was including benefits at a fifty-five. So, it was a fifty-five.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, it was fifty-five K for the position and twenty-something for benefits.
Okay.
And the others were part-time, no benefits.
Okay.
I wonder if before, it actually might make sense to bring Lisa, cuz she had, remember we had the meeting and she talked about she had goals and visions of where.
Where these potential three.
No, she had more insight.
I think, yeah, but I think I, I also am seeing things and I know I've spoken to Heather directly, but I think that's the only person I've spoken to directly. So, there are certain areas of interest that I think this little housing, and housing, this little planning group. Needs and areas of expertise in-house, that's where the house works, sorry, crisscross. Let me just list them and then, and more than, I mean, one person can carry more than one, wear more than one hat. But here are the things that I think are missing, that we're looking for infill. One of them is the one that Brian mentioned, design expertise. This is not just when we get a big new project and we probably will do a fifty-three G. This is looking at just the way we were looking at the house with the garage and wondering what could be done. Somebody who's actually has a design background, who's working in-house so that when we do review of special permits, they actually can look at it. And start thinking along the lines of configuration and maybe even meet with somebody, cuz people often do meet in-house before they come, before they file a special permit. So, I'll just leave that as design. A different one is we're still eager to get somebody and it could be Brian, but maybe not. With the ability to go to the historical commission meetings and actually read the, understand and read the, the Greek Revival House. So, understand the local history and so on, or at least is keyed in. Now, this, in theory, could be a contract position. I don't think it has to be a permanent position. But we need somebody with the expertise, which is normal for planning departments, to deal with your historic resources in your community. So, that's another air, bucket, if you will, or cap, well, it's called a hat. The other one is affordable housing. I think Brian's grown a lot in that and maybe that's, it just stays where we are. But maybe not. Certainly, we know that there is, you know, another level of, maybe that's just a, again, consultant or contract that goes with it. But it could, really will need a permanent or a regular contract. So, affordable housing is another area. Then the last one is that I believe we've all talked about this at some point. We need somebody who's comfortable. And I would say the way Brian presents to us his recommendations, who is our staff position going to the zoning board of appeals. So, that's also, maybe if freed up, it could be something Brian wants to take on. I can't tell.
This was this potential one that we had, the forty K for the part-time Z E O.
Maybe it's not even a Z E O.
It might not even be a Z E O, but that, that's that space that you're talking about.
That might be, the person who's a zoning enforcement officer is not necessarily presenting for the planning board. And I've come to realize that's many communities, in fact, we did, I don't wanna go too far into this, but there are many communities. And this board is aware that, where somebody goes representing the planning board and our recommendations to the Z B A. Cuz that's, that can be different from what the zoning enforcement officer is doing and I'm really big on governance right now and separating that, who's speaking for whom.
So, this is, you would call this a staff liaison?
Yeah, that is, we've heard about it at this table.
Yeah, I just wanna write down.
Is that what you're calling it as a title, as a staff liaison?
That would be fine. Yeah, I'm a person who goes to Z B A, yeah.
I thought we talked about Brian and Savannah Nicole splitting, that that was one of the meetings, one of them that go there.
We, I'm just throwing out needs.
Needs.
I don't remember. That's our job, I think, for the rest of this, till ten o'clock, trying to, till whatever, nine forty-five.
Yeah, so, um. I think, I think you've outlined needs that nearly everyone, forget this board, that nearly everyone can agree with. Who's in the space in terms of Z E O, design review, historical commission.
I would, I would also add economic development, but I don't know if that's not already gonna be taken over.
So, yeah, so.
Okay, good. Yeah, no, you're right.
Where I had envisioned this last year, in terms of when we were doing the budget, going through the override and talking about all of our potentials. The, you know, I had envisioned being able to bring on a full-time housing and economic development person. There's no doubt that even from the department heads meeting, which I was not prepared to, to hear the.
Support.
Yeah, really to hear the support for housing and economic development. I was very pleasantly surprised. I was not surprised by Lisa. Lisa is certain, she very much understa, understands the need. And the need that we've needed for fifteen, twenty years for a housing and economic development planner.
They are different.
They are different, but they, they can be housed in the planning department.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And also be a liaison with the manager's office and they would be, it would be someone that would, that would work almost under both departments.
Yes. So, where, what's missing then would be the design.
Exactly. So, so what, so what I, what I, yeah, so what I was thinking was a, was a, was, sorry. Of personal services for that to be a full-time benefits eligible person doing housing and economic development. With potential for, where is it, professional services? And this could be the space where we could have, we could have either whether it's in-house, whether we call it in-house or not. It would be obviously a part-time professional services contract position. So, I, I would obviously completely love both, both of those. But that, that, and that's what we're talking about today and, and, and next week as well. But for kind of how we presented the idea of, of having a part-time person now in Savannah Nicole, the, you know. My intention, and that's not necessarily the town meetings intentions or anyone else's, my intention was that, that it would transition. The, the goal would be to transition to a full-time and then we would supplement with professional services money however we, you know. Maybe that thirty-five goes to eighty in order to do multiple different types of things.
And I think we all, I mean, the general, we've got a general strategy here, what it does, cuz I'm, I think more than anybody, I've been the one who's gone through the personnel board. And the job descriptions multiple times, starting with before your predecessor. I've just, I've been the one carrying that. And actually for probably almost the past twenty years. This is something where we, I think, do, I think right now, what, it feels really rushed to be moving into this budget. And trying to anticipate, cuz we do have to get some job descriptions cranked up if, for any full-time. And at that point, we, and I'm not the only one who's saying we need to, any board, like the finance committee and the manager. Going to wanna know what those job descriptions look like. And I think we should think about what makes sense in terms of what's likely, in terms of somebody's areas of expertise. And we do see some groupings, design and preservation tend to go together more comfortably. And I don't know, economic development and housing do strike me as rather different, but.
Those are my areas of specialty.
Okay. That's great.
I, I, I'm not too uncomfortable with it because that can.
Too uncomfortable with what?
I'm not too uncomfortable with doing, I see the design and the preservation and the historical and the L H D support all in one person, which we currently don't have. We're kind of piecemealing it with the staff we have. And then, yep, the heritage district.
I mean, that's like one meeting a year, but.
And just, and then the affordable housing is Brian's really strong strength.
Yeah.
Component, the Z B A support.
I agree.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, I.
I, I, I'm sorry, I'm giving you compliments. I hope you're okay. And the Z B A is where, like the liaison between, is where we fall.
Permanent people.
It would be, it would be a trading off probably of permanent, based on schedules and stuff. Because it's gonna be between Monday night, those are on Mondays generally, and so you have the conflict between historical and Z B A.
It's something to talk with our manager about. Maybe that should be changed so that that's not a conflict, honestly. I, I mean, there are just too many people attached to one night of the week when we've got a bunch.
But Heather, were you saying that the design and historic preservation person would be consulting and not a full-time?
At this point, I think we start with a consultant who's.
But a contract position, so they're not just randomly talking and that. They have to be in here one day a week.
Yes, a contract. Yeah, it's a contracted. Yeah, just like Savannah Nicole is right now.
Can I, can I ask what, are we starting from the bottom up, looking at what's possible in terms of, I'm sorry. I'm confused as to how we proceed because I don't know that we have funding for all of these positions. So, are we creating a wish list and then pushing hard for that to get more money from the town manager? Or are we looking at this existing budget and saying, what do we fit within this hundred and four thousand nine hundred and five fifty?
No, so, so that, yeah, so the, the idea is that. No, so, so that, yeah, so the, uh, the idea is that if we're talking about adding a full-time person that is definitely completely new, it's not working within what we have, it's a total, you would add seventy-five, cause that, cause that, the one oh four that there, that's the recording secretary.
Right, so, so my question is.
And that's under the, I'm just.
Does, if, if we were to go to the town manager and say, hey, we need a new F T E and we need to increase our consulting by twenty thousand, excuse me, I had to concentrate. Will she be able to provide the funds?
That's, well, so, that, that, that's, that's, you're talking about, that's the budget process. So we, we, we request it and then sh- and then the manager would say, I agree or disagree with this request.
That she's coming on the phone with us.
And then, 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 so then her request then go to FinCom. And then what goes to town meeting is, here's the planning board's requests, here's the manager's request, and here's FinCom's request. So they look at all three of those things to reconcile that.
I'm sorry, I. Again, I'm, my brain is at like two percent tonight, I apologize.
We're creating a new budget, like.
This is for the, but we're in F Y twenty right now.
Correct.
So we're talking about twenty-one.
We're talking about twenty-one.
We're talking about twenty-one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have to get our budget to.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
By the end of the year.
Right.
The other question I have is just about our numbers and we, I can't run numbers right now, but I need to understand, cause I, uh, uh, I know where in the classification, the part-time, I mean, the new full-time would land, where, I, I guess there was some number that was just thrown out, the fifty-five.
It was ba- yeah, it was based on a fifty-five K, yeah.
What was, where was that in the class, which class, I mean, I don't know, E, um, D, um, C.
So that's, that's with the, that's with the, the conversation with personnel, but, but, um.
Let me know what it looks like.
Yeah.
I mean, I could, if I didn't, if I knew, I would have brought it in.
But why does it matter if we're just getting a budget?
Because it's an amount of money.
Yeah.
But it was still based, it was still based on fifty-five thousand, that's what it was based on.
Do you know what that was, was the?
What the exact class numbers, no.
No, I don't need the letter, but do you know?
Yeah, but it, it was still.
And I assume, um, that, I, I just wanna know if it's, is this realistic? I know we used it once before, is this a realistic?
In terms of looking at other comparable communities for part-time and, uh, planner, or sorry, full, full-time assistants, planners?
Assist really starting level, basically what we're talking about, yeah.
Assistant planners, yep, fif- fifty-five is competitive. It's certainly, um, above some of, you know, uh, above some others, but.
So it could be get caught, is there wiggle room in there?
It, well, so that's actually a very specific process through the personnel board.
Be aware of it, yeah.
Yeah, so the, and they have to do their own study to determine how, how many percentage of other communities are above this and below this, and then they make their own decision.
I understand.
Our request, or, sorry, my request at the moment, and actually it wasn't just mine, we all talked about it, was fifty-five.
Yeah, sorry, that was old news, I mean, forgotten. And so then the other one is, is the, since I'm feeling really the urgency of getting our long overdue staffing for this sort of design area and preservation planning, um, do we know what a re- this person will probably come in at a higher level, cause that's how consultants work as contract employees, and do we know, are just, I, again, I'd like to see one day a week in office and, or it could be two half-days, but something the equivalent of a day a week, plus one night a month, um, do we know what that adds up to? And, and obviously there's no vacation time, so probably throw out, take away a couple nights, you know, a couple of those, uh, days. Yeah, I just haven't done the math.
So, and then this we would talk about. So these are the three things that we're.
Do design slash preservation, cause it is called a preservation planner?
Yep.
And actually, yeah, you can do P R E S, P L.
Um.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, so, see, so this is good, so these are the three things that we are talking about. I honestly, I think everything else is really secondary, right?
Yeah, this is good. It's very good.
Okay, a hundred dollars an hour, one day a week is forty thousand dollars.
So.
This, this is Z B A.
Ooh, I wish.
This is.
Well, this is what it is, I'm just.
To, to, but, no, no, this, the.
A hundred dollars an hour, one day a week is forty-one thousand for the year.
I just wanna, sorry.
Okay, did, did Brian get that, cause I, I'm.
I just made up a hundred dollars.
I just slipped it out, it up too, it's not, it's, it's a lot of money.
Oh, Heather Hannah Smith, I'll take that, it sounded okay to me.
Did you, how much did you do per, I did a hundred. So, and how many hours a week?
Hundred bucks an hour.
That's, wow.
These are kind of.
Less than what, what, what Krieger and all were gonna charge us for paralegal advice. They were gonna charge us a hundred thirty bucks an hour.
Oh, they're expensive.
Lawyers get a lot more than lawyers.
Well, paralegal.
Paralegal.
These poor design people.
This wasn't even a lawyer, this was a.
No, the designers just don't get, they can't, they can't even, they can't charge what even electricians are charging today.
That's pathetic.
It's really.
Okay, well.
Okay, so.
Good for us, I guess.
Anyway, the, we're, we're trying to, what we're trying to do.
It was not fifty-two hours per year, I did one day a week, eight hours times fifty-two days.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, there will be one night.
That's fifty-two day, that's fifty-two days, not hours, yeah.
Yeah, but then you have the problem of the night, one night meeting a week.
It was just an average, I was just making some.
But actually, it's, it's, uh, the Z B A meets once or twice a month.
Well, I think Z B A, we're going to ask our own, uh, our permanent, with two full-time people, I think we have to ask for that one.
I would, yeah.
Okay.
That's a.
This person would be just the design and historical, which is design, yeah.
Correct.
So.
Um, so these are the three that are in play, the one, so this planning board staff liaison specifically to Z B A, is that?
Is, no, that's you.
If you were Savannah Nicole, if she's going to.
It's you or.
It's, it's not a new position, it's a new duty.
Okay, no, that's, that's, yeah, managing the.
But we're also taking away some duties actually, so I don't see this getting.
That's what I'm saying about how it'll all have to get.
So my question on the F T E, is this, is this just an F T E, the.
That's the hope.
Large Santa Nicole's position, or is it an additional F T E?
That is my hope. That, my, my hope is to basically get the, the thirty-five K that we basically decided we're gonna use all of that
Right. For professional services.
For professional services. Get that out of professional services, make it a full-time employee position with benefits, and then we still keep thirty-five K in there. We do not wanna ever lose, we never wanna go under thirty-five K again.
Right.
Because that gives us some optionality.
Right.
So no matter what, because we can definitely find use for that money.
Oh, it's planning, it's planning.
So, so we're not going to two and a half planners, we're going to two planners?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Two plan, I, no, it would be two and a half, it would, it would be two and a half, right now or one and a half?
So my question was, would this F T E be simply taking Savannah Nicole's position?
And going from a half to full-time?
And what you're saying is?
And then in addition to that half, whatever, we're not calling this a halftime, but it's a.
We would retain the halftime position that exists, and Savannah Nicole's would go to a full-time.
No, one day a week is not.
No, I don't see that, I see expanding a halftime position to a full-time and having a completely new one-day-a-week
Right, right.
position for design professional.
Okay.
Design preservation.
Yeah, design preservation.
A contracted.
Okay.
Contract.
That, that, that was trying to understand.
Yep, so it doesn't fall under professional services.
This would, I mean, this would honestly, this would be great.
That, by that point, that's what, that is standard for a community our size, um, though months to, I mean, this is not, I mean, it's not luxurious, but we're no longer, that would no longer be, and we could not complain any longer, so we really do have to cover everything.
No, I, I think that is.
Board, our needs should be satisfied with this level of staffing.
Exactly, exactly, well, we have to remember, it's like when you go to a spring town meeting and you say, it's like, do this for us and we won't whine at you anymore.
I think, I think it's more of, if, if you look at comparable communities, I talked to a lot of planners.
Right, right.
No one can believe that I just hired an assistant planner.
Right.
They, they're like, wait a minute, it's only been you, and I was like, and even before me, it was only one person, you know, nobody can believe it at all.
Can we bring Lisa?
Yeah, I just wanna ask, so are we giving up on the halftime, the part-time Z E O?
I'm sorry.
Are we giving up on the part-time Z E O?
Sounds like that's on the back burner, and that we're gonna let the manager deal with that if that's an issue, is.
And the grant writer, the grant writers.
The grant writer, that's.
That's definitely a manager's thing, she is laser focused on, on that, so.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to find it, hold on.
And we're okay on all the other categories?
Here.
Oh, here, she just texted me. Okay.
Here, there it is.
There's no tuition in here, do we need tuition?
We wanted him to go to more things, remember?
Yeah, the travel got pulled and the override.
But continuing education is important, so, so why don't we put something in tuition?
We'll, we'll get there.
We'll get there, that will, little thing.
We'll get there.
Hey, Lisa, it's, uh, Brian, Zakelli, and the rest of the planning board, how's it going?
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
I should let you know that you are being recorded.
You're on TV. On camera.
Your voice.
Um, so we have just been going through specifically, uh, staffing-related, um, expenses. And talking about what we would like to do to expand the department. So as of right now, we have one full-time person in me and a halftime person in Savannah Nicole. Um, our hope is that we would expand the part-time position, um, that Savannah Nicole's position to a full-time housing and economic development planner. And then in addition to that, have a one-day-a-week design preservation professional. So instead of, so of going from one and a half to two and a half people. Um, we wanted to see, cause at first we were talking about a potential grant writer, but, uh, we wanted to see how it fits into your budget, to see if you're potentially looking for a grant writer. Um, and how the housing and economic development planner would also potentially be under the manager's department as well.
Okay, so if I were to count exactly, we're talking about two full-time employees and then a one-day-a-week person, right? We're not counting two and a half?
One and a half, it's one and a half days.
Yeah, it's really, no, it's really two point two.
The cost is about two and a half.
The cost is about two and a half, so we just cost, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, maybe I'm not mentioning any other, um, F T Es in there. And then, so, I mean, I think based on the department head meeting today, I'm just still absorbing all the con- the feedback, um, there seems to be a need for multiple, um, paths, uh, that don't all translate well to a full-time F T E at the moment. So, you're right, you can't have a full-time helping person, you can't get have a full-time economic development person, a full-time grant writer. It's just, that's just too many F T Es there, I do like the incremental, uh, movement towards that. And I'm wondering if, if, um, you have that additional staff within your department and, um, we can do some training and we can talk about some training, my department in particular. We could sort of share the role of grant writing for the first year and see how that goes. So basically see how successful we feel we are in researching, writing, getting magic grants, and then make that judge a con or no.
So that would fall under your budget, Lisa, the grant writer?
Yeah, I, I don't know if I can push for a grant writer in my budget right now, because, um, I, you know, without committing myself to anything right now, and even though I go on my camera, um, it seems like there's a big push for sustainability director or manager or for some person. That person, as part of their job, could be also doing some grant writing. So if we start to do some grant writing in my office, if we are able to get a sustainability person doing grant writing, if you have additional staff that's doing grant writing, we might not push for a lot of that in this next budget cycle.
Um, yeah, I mean, there, I mean, at the department heads meeting this morning, the engineering department was very, very clear that due, due to new regulations at the state level, they are not going to have the capacity to keep up with the regulations that are necessary, specifically with M S, the M S four permit. So, so, um, um, that, that's just information for the board, I know, Lisa, I know you, you were there, um.
Yeah, and that, I, I think there's a, there's a larger question right now about funding for M S four in stormwater. So certainly if, um, there is either a, uh, a review of, or a water sewer rating or whether there is an appetite for some other kind of fee structure for stormwater and then, um.
That pays for it.
And then I have to talk about addition resources that they need and then, um, because we still need, you know, we are applying for research and applying for getting grants, we will need their manpower as well, so if, um, yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to definitely figure that out too.
Yep.
I make it tricky.
Um. Outside of, well, do you ha- do you have any thoughts on the department? It might be too early for you to tell, because you're, you're not really looking at all of the departments at once right now. But, but, um, you know, do you have a, any feelings on the department going from one, essentially one and a half to two and a half? People.
Well, I think, excuse me, I'll jump in, I think, do you wanna hear what the thinking is about what we're, um, why we feel that's, uh, where we need to go?
Necessary, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so I think the. I'm just wondering if the, the person who's doing one day a week is considered a third employee or if it's really gonna be a, you know, a.
It's a contract, it would, it would be a contract for professionals, yeah.
It's a contracted.
If you're professional services, so if you're looking at, you know, real staff, you're looking at going from one point five or two.
That's a better sell.
That's what is real, I mean, legally, that's exactly what we would be doing.
Yeah, technically, it's not two and a half, yeah.
You say technically, but legally, cause that's exactly, there would be, uh, we'd be going through a, um, personnel board rev- um, evaluation or assessment and a personnel, a rating and a cla- what, the whole process before it gets, before the town meeting to create a position. So that's very different, but the, um, contract employee is our approach to recognizing that bringing on yet another person is, um, frankly, not going to happen and not even pa- maybe even reasonable, given the size of the community. But it's something where we need different skill sets and as a relative, as an extremely small planning staff right now, that, that's a good way to get, uh, the skill sets we need.
So tech- technically.
I think, I think investing in a professional services also allows you to ramp up and down the kind of the design services you need, depending on the project. Cause you might have all these projects come at once, where you need somebody five days a week.
I'm going to jump in, Lisa.
Forty hours for a quick amount of time.
Lisa, so this is where I think some explanations needed, that when there's a large project coming in, the good news is that fifty-three G will cover it, and at that point, we will move most of that, uh, the person who's got that part-time contract person, we would see managing, but frankly, Brian could be managing too, that fifty-three G outside consultant. For a large-scale project, that's going to be somebody who's probably an architect. Um, what we're needing in-house is someone to help staff our historical commission, um, to deal with preservation issues. If we get that L H D passed to staff the local historic district commission, um, that person will have a strong background in, um, preservation planning. Um, and it's a very different skill set from the architect, they're actually not the same. So the architect would probably be coming in on fifty-three G for the large projects. But we actually need somebody who's here one day a week, because that person will be evaluating historic resources as even same, simple special permit, um, applications come in, so that'll be every week, plus, um, routinely taking, um, assisting the historical commission with, uh, preparing materials for their meetings, right now when they meet, for example, they don't have the B forms, um, ready. They have to contract with, for the B forms for these, um, quick reviews before demolition, um, per- when, after demolition permit has been requested. So that's routine, um, versus the big projects you were just describing.
Yes, and some.
I also just wanted to, um, make a clarification, because technically, um, the way that the money sits right now, the, the planning board is trying to go from one full-time position to two full-time positions. Because technically, we do, it's not, we don't have a halftime person, we have professional services that is paying a, a quote, assistant planner. But it is, it's not, it's, it is not, so we would, so the cell is going from one full, one F T E to two F T E.
So is there going to be a, um, a reduction as your professional services budget is down?
Please, please never know.
No, no, no.
Um, cause the idea that, that, that professional services would not only potentially cover this preservation, uh, design professional, but it potentially might be needed for other projects that, um, are outside of that, so if anything, that thirty-five K, I mean, it might go, it, it would might go even higher, I, I, you know, we're gonna work on that, we don't really know exactly what that's going to be. But that professional services money would cover this one-day-a-week person and potentially some other one-off projects that we need to do. So that thirty-five is not gonna do it. So it would probably maybe go from thirty-five to, to like, yes, sixty, uh, seventy.
No, seventy-five.
Guy, let's be honest, it's gotta.
I mean, that's a larger ask, um, because then what you're saying is that it's fifty.
Right, there's no, there are no benefits, there's no vacation, I mean, that, so it is.
Right, so that leaves about fifty.
A lot cheaper to go there. A lot cheaper to go there.
No, with
We're cognizant of the problem.
Because they're getting paid on an hourly basis.
So, but that would basically turn our professional services money, forty of it, forty K would be for this one-day-a-week person. And then thirty-five would be for routine business the planning board needs to do. For random projects that, that we need to pay for, um.
So when we, for example, we use the professional services when we were working on the rezone for the center business district. We needed to bring, we bring in professional services to make sure to go over our zoning and to help us.
Highland Ave, we brought, we brought Dennis in for Highland Ave to look at alternatives. That was totally, we just, we ate, we ate all of that. We, we paid for all of it.
Yeah.
Um, and those types of projects, yeah, we need that money.
Well, anything coming out of the master plan, well, I'm sure there will be some rezoning. And as, we've seen some defeat recently, and I think having a consultant coming in means it helps. Explain it to all those interested parties and move it into town meeting.
But Lisa, you're gonna wanna know priority, so if we, if, if we're gonna have to get down to this in terms of professional services, if we have to pick between having this one-day-a-week person or have other money for specified projects, you're gonna wanna see a priority list from us, or what?
Uh, I think that a strong sell would be tying it to the implementation of the master plan.
Right, yeah.
Uh, as well as, um, maybe for some of the, um, I think for some of the designs, or I would also link it to some of the, um, maybe sort of consequence of not having, have that expertise in-house and, and what that's, um,
Consequences. Okay.
Okay, that, I think that gives us enough to, to kind of make some conscious decisions next week.
Yeah, and e- even though the master plan costs itself with a short-term, um, financial ask, I'd be curious to know, because we have put money towards the master plan the last couple of years. So if we would, you know, at least some consistent investment in planning initiatives, um, you know, to factor that in, whether your total ask is about the same, if more or less.
Yeah, because we, we came in with a hundred thousand for the master plan, or more, right?
We, no, we, the last appropriation that we got was seventy-five.
Seventy-five more.
We'll do it.
That's where we're coming in.
That's, and so out of that seventy-five, uh, all seventy-five, well, so it's, it's very clear. There was, there was an article. It had nothing, um, and we asked for the seventy-five specifically for the master plan.
Okay.
That would uncover the
I mean, even, like, my thoughts are, um, you know, sometimes there is a discussion about saying, like, a hundred thousand a year should go towards, um, preventative means. So a thought is maybe like a certain amount every year, we can get used to seeing as part of
Master plan implementation.
Right, so like, the initial funds for the last little years were about creating master plans. And then maybe we should have some consistent funding, like, about implementing the master plan.
I mean, that, that would obviously be ama- amazing that, um.
That's why we need the full-time economic development and housing component. We need the design in-house.
No, I mean
Because, because all those other functions will support actually additional revenue coming into the town.
Yeah, and I think the idea about investing in staff, that we have capacity and potentially the ability to bring in money, um, either through expanding the tax things, or getting grants, or saving money because we're planning better, um, rather than saying, you know, we're gonna have thirty-five thousand worth of quote-unquote project.
Right.
So at the beginning, it might, you know, sort of investing in the staff and, and linking it to the master plan implementation. And then talking about how is this, in the long run, is gonna be cost-effective in terms of, um, a better implementation of the plan would be a good way to sell it.
Yep, yeah, I, I, I agree, because that's something we've been working on for, looking forward and working on for, god, ten, fifteen years. I mean, it's been a long time.
Um, Lisa, while we were talking, uh, we didn't discuss as a planning board, but my question to you is about legal. Did you want to separate out what the planning board uses for legal out of the budget and put it inside the planning board's budget?
So if you could propose a certain amount that you would need for legal, um, I, I think that might be
Okay.
I, I mean, I still, I haven't quite thought through
We don't have a number.
The cost benefit of, uh, separating out the budget, so at least you're managing it, um, and having the same firm, or is it having a different firm?
Well, it's two contracts under, if it is the same firm, it's two different contracts, or
I think that's gonna be tough.
Well, I, I think why, why
That are management.
We do pay, we do pay a fat, that's not fat, we, we pay a flat sum of money.
Long sum.
Anderson and Creager, and there is
It is fat.
Sort of, you know, planning assistance embedded in there.
Yeah.
Right, exactly.
You know, not in special projects, but there is some. So I, I wanna make sure we don't like, you know, pull out those extra, you know, one or two thousand a month, because that's gonna add up pretty quickly.
Exactly.
Um, so what I would do is, uh, I, I think we have to say, I think the concept of pulling it out so that you can sort of manage, um, is, is a potential good one. I think we would need to maybe sit down and work on the numbers together.
Okay.
Maybe it's just itemizing those professional services, that professional services money, and some of it being legal.
Yeah.
So that, yeah, okay, um.
Uh, whoa, that's going to look like a very fat number.
Being clear, so even if you're managing it, it doesn't mean that every time that you work with the town council, it, it comes out of a spot, right? Could still, there's activity that you work with a town council that would still come out of the town's spot fee. So maybe it's more like, we just need to be clear and, and, and
Right, I, that's
Keep an eye on, on a monthly bill to make sure that they're not still bringing out things that shouldn't be included.
Exactly, I mean, it's, it's, you, you, that, you hit the nail right on the head. Because I think especially, you know, when you're going into town meeting, you just want to make sure that everything is so clear to every single town meeting member who's gonna be voting.
Hi, Selena.
So I, I'm confused, so, um, what did I miss? So
We like her, she's cute. She's supposed to be a bad.
So I thought that our concern about legal was because we had a special project involving looking at the zoning. And that was really a one-off. It may take several years, but was there
So we've, in the past, we had control of our, our legal. And we lost control of our legal, and it's now under the direction of
Okay.
Of, and so the question is, is pulling it back under so we can direct our own legal without having to go through approval and have the select board be a thumbhold on our legals.
So I think it has to do specifically with what we are going to use those legal funds for in terms of how, we, you, we, we can't just go to FinCom and say, we need this legal funds. They're gonna say, well, why do you need, what do you need it for now that you didn't need it for the last year? The idea is that there are probably two kinds of buckets of legal funds that we use it for, or three. One is, um, the zoning that we write. So we would obviously need specific legal review for any zoning that we write for town meeting. The other is day-to-day operations. Crazy stuff happens every month that's, this, we've never seen this before, and we don't know how to deal with this. We, you know, weird stuff, call it whatever you want. Um, and then the other, I would say, is actual, like, special projects. So, so, um, the question is whether or not we should be putting extra money in professional services or not. I think it warrants more of a conversation with legal and Lisa.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
I, I just, you know, that, I, I feel so eager to see the, um, maintain this what, um, money, the funds that we can use for special projects. And the contract, I'll call it contract employee with the design slash, um, preservation planning, um, background. I, to throw the legal into that, that same pot just scares me, so.
I mean, I think I think we can get by without having extra money, but I, I don't, I don't know what the, I don't know what the
Saying if that budget can be, uh, managed differently, you know, the town's legal budget, so that we're not quite as um, vulnerable really for the times when we need counsel, which I think any citizen would think we should have, so. So it's, um, a different issue.
So does this board feel like the current setup has had negative impacts?
Yes, I, I do. I feel like it has, it has negative impacts, not by anyone's intention. But I think like at town meeting, zoning should be coming through, the zoning legal, respective. Should be coming through the planning board. If people wanna talk about zoning, they should be talking with us present. They shouldn't be pulling on legal because they can to go talk to them independent, and so there's miscommunication, misinformation being, and conversations going on.
How does, uh, change in control of funding get rid of that? That's the thing I don't see. If we were in control of legal funding, how does it
For zoning.
For zoning, how does that affect what you're saying?
I think, I think the, the select board could still ask any questions they want or need from legal.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't necessarily make it exclusive to the board, the planning board.
Well, the problem is it's mixed, right? So our, our staff is art, theirs is Mina usually. Um, and so when, but Art is reports to the select board right now. He doesn't report, really, we're not his point person.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
And so really, when it comes to zoning, anything regarding the zoning should be, the point person should be the planning department, the planning board, because that is what the state law says, not the, not the select.
How does, but that doesn't prevent the select board from doing what they're doing right now. They'll still talk to Mina, and there still won't be a point person.
Well, they can also talk to Art anytime they want.
Well, no.
So I, I just, I'm just, I don't know how, I don't disagree with having
Dedicated funds.
Dedicated funds.
Dedicated funds.
It's just the argument for having those dedicated funds, the scenario you're describing.
Their control isn't there. It's if we have dedicated funds, we have dedicated funds, so.
So if they choose, if they choose to change council, right, and we don't have dedicated funds towards zoning, we could end up with any legal team or any staff they want.
Right.
But expertise may be more in contract law than in zoning. Because right now, Art is, has always been, prior to being, you know, the town council, was the zoning.
I think that's a very effective, that's an effective argument.
Yes. So right now, yes, we are using all the same firm with different expertise amongst them. Um, different, for different expertise, but we really, the zoning, and they should know that the zoning, you know, comes through the planning board's budget, just like we wouldn't go and, you know, go ask them about their, well, we can't because contractor, you know, the issues that, their permitting issues or the ZBA stuff, we wouldn't go.
Well, I think, okay, so I think the task for us then is to, um, I can put, uh, I'll talk to Art and get a rough number of what kind of he thinks
He dedicates to
He dedicates to us. We can put that as part of our professional services. Lisa can, you know, do her magic and decide whether or not where that goes. Um, so, you know, we have, it seems like we have all the information we need.
One more, asks is, do we want
In, in addition to that, Brian, I think we should have a conversation with Art and the team about the kinds of things you wanna do around zoning, and which ones can already be included within their current fee.
Right.
I'd like, I mean, I kinda like to start there.
Yeah, we're hoping everything is in their current fee as of right now.
So, but I, I was on the
Yeah, so I think, I think Brian, the approach is that if you have sense of the, the project, that's what the planning board wants to do over the next year or so, let's hit that meeting with Art, um, and sit down and kind of plan out, uh, you know, the, the time they can dedicate to getting those done as, as part of their current contract. Let's start with that first and see what, you know, what might have to be put off, or what might be additional costs.
And, um, Lisa, when is your budget due to FinCom?
February fifteenth.
February fifteenth.
Okay. And our budgets are due to you by January?
January ninth.
Okay, that's right, alright, okay.
Okay.
Um, we could
I think we're good.
Alright, Lisa, thanks so much for
Hi, Selena.
Lovely having you join us.
Yeah, thanks so much for the, for the time, um.
Good night, oh, good night!
Good night. Alright, see you later, Lisa. Uh, that was great.
It's just too bad we, we, we don't all enjoy small children.
Yeah, in terms of like the re, rewriting our zoning and stuff, like a special project that way, I didn't anticipate that would be coming in in twenty-one. I figured that would be coming out closer to twenty-two, and we start working on that.
I just wanted to make sure that whatever structure we have.
Is there any projects right now from all the stuff that we've been reviewing that we did wanna take on that would be a special project for legal?
Private property trees?
So that would be us writing a lot of that, then. ADUs is the big one.
I, I, yeah, ADUs would be a very large one. The, 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 the tree bylaw would not be, that's a two-page, that's a two-page bylaw.
Fits within their
Yeah, and ADU bylaw is going it's just, there's a lot, because there's, there's a lot.
Brainstorming.
Yeah, no, I'm
Well, it's
Those are not, to me, the biggest thing, I think we're getting stuff, I'd like to read Jen's, is going back to the large house site re, plan review and looking at our numbers there. The tear downs are still a huge issue, and protecting the small houses is another one.
So those, 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 those types of things, I think, would be covered, there, that's not a special project. That is covered under what would be the, what, what I would consider the routine business of, of the planning board two times a year introducing legislation. That has to be part of, of their, uh, so their struc, their fee structure or whatever.
So, Maureen, are you, are you anticipating that we'd ask legal to review what our options are in terms of preventing? How would, okay, so where, where, where does legal fit into preventing tear downs?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was talking about special projects for the thirty-five or whatever.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry.
We're talking about legal, she was, because she wanted to know if we had special projects, but
The last time I remember where this board actually used our own budget actually was the subdivision regulation, so it's been a while. Um, maybe we wanna start with, I don't know if it can be done as incremental, but we are wanting to get going, and maybe the one lump sums too much to get legal to start working through the zoning bylaw and telling us where we, they would recommend, just
Well, that's, I think Heather and I were just discussing that, and you, I think you were saying you didn't see that as coming up.
More as twenty-two versus twenty-one, but if we wanna try to start in twenty-one, then
The, the time, so, one issue that we're having is that it would be really nice to have the master plan done by yesterday.
Exactly.
So that we could have an intelligent conversation about the budget as it relates to implementation of the, of the master plan, but
Here's another thought, though. Because it is hard for town meeting and the manager to, well, start it the other way. Finance committee, manager, town meeting to, uh, deal with these huge lumps. Some, um, projects in that zoning bylaw is a big one. Money can be encumbered, so just getting a head start is not a bad thing, so.
So stockpile.
Well, if it's a spec, if it's a
Save, save, start saving.
It wouldn't be professional services, it would be a standalone article, is what you're talking about, for the rewriting of those, you know. So that, that, that's a whole, that's different, because that's outside of, of the budget.
I think the bigger thing for the budget frankly is, we don't know what's going to happen, just as we didn't know who expected the Highland Avenue, whoever thought about Highland at Dana, I certainly didn't, as a, you know. So I think, to me, it's more the, it's more that. It's just, it can, it'll reverse, that's fine. Uh, I think we do that with snow plowing, we can expect, we can just say
They do it all the time for legal, the select board with their
Let's get real, um, it's legal that you don't know what you're gonna get hit with, and this board dealing with land use gets hit.
People like suing us.
So, so
They do. Oh, I, I tell people that. Anytime there's a denial of a developer's project, they will always appeal, and they do.
Right, and they do, yeah.
Well, if you get approved, you get appealed in here too, so.
Right, that's true.
You get approved, you get appealed.
Stop and shop, I know, I never
Everything's appealed.
So this particular discussion, what's the endpoint? I wonder, how are we gonna escrow these funds, or are we gonna escrow, I'm, I'm confused.
With Lisa, and I think that's
So I, so I think, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a conversation, not, it's not gonna be a very long one, but, but, but with, with Art and Lisa about rough, rough money that's, that's kind of, that's used on the board right now, and whether or not we could do what we need to do within that framework.
Right, right.
Uh, the hope is that we would not have need, at least next year, to
That's not in this.
Right. Um, and then if we do have a, a known special project such as a, a, a rewrite of the zoning or update, whatever we wanna call it, that would probably be not in the budget, and that would probably be its own separate article at town meeting.
Right, but, but Maureen and Heather, you were both talking about setting funds aside for future use.
It's different, I'm sorry, that was, scratch it, just forgot it.
Okay, yeah, because I didn't see
So we're not looking to bring legal into our budget, we're looking to get allocated a specific amount of the legal budget that we manage.
We're, we're gonna see We're, we're going to see what they say, but yeah.
So it wouldn't show up in here, but it would say that we're now going to divide it and this part, the planning board, you report to the planning board for this dollar allocation, for those you report to the select board and whoever they else.
Exactly, and the explanation for that is pretty clear in the, in the sense that there are sort of different expertises.
Yeah.
I didn't say that exactly right, but anyway, but you get the idea.
Well, we also are supposed to be independent of the select board, we're not supposed to be.
That's right.
Or, we need to stay independent. It's very important that the legislative and the jurors, all the different branches of government stay independent of each other.
That's right.
Um, okay, so I'm go- so where are we going to go now or?
Well, I'm.
Oh, you're just going to ask if we're going to increase the professional services to include the design preservation person.
Right, so, um, I think that's what, so I think that's what this is. This is going to go.
It's going down.
It's going to go, it's going to get added to this.
Correct.
Um, and then, um, account, accounting for recordings and then the personal services is in account for a recording secretary.
Why is that? Because that's also a contract, isn't it?
Yeah, but for some reason it's, 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 or it should, it still should.
But that used to be a town employee in the, I mean, a permanent employee, so that may move.
Yeah, I don't know, well, it was actually in overtime for like ten years. And I don't know why it was in overtime, so I'll find out the appropriate location for the recording secretary.
Glad we mentioned it, because that may be the wrong bucket.
But basically in terms of permanent, it should, it should include myself.
Right.
This full-time, the full-time employee.
Correct.
Here as a housing and economic development planner.
Correct.
And then the other staffing would be design preservation professional at forty-one, plus thirty-five, plus whatever the recording secretary may or may not be in there.
And what about, where Suzanne fit this?
Suzanne is actually paid one hundred percent through engineering.
Is that now true? Because it used to be we had to sign, I did, it was twenty-five percent or something.
We do not, we do not pay for her services.
Well, she does a amazing job for us and I get paid for my.
Uh, she's great.
She's phenomenal.
No, but that, that is a change from, not that long ago.
Um, she is on, uh, medical leave at the moment.
Okay. Do we have a backup?
We, so the, the, the hope is that, the hope is that during, uh, that these are all being recorded and that, um, that she will still from home be able to write minutes and submit. If that is not going to be happening over the next little bit, I, 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 we're going to have some issues. We have missed, so, so she has missed two meetings in a row.
And also the historical commission.
And the historical commission.
And the commission really needs, I mean, because there's no, there's no Brian there, there's no Savannah Nicole, this is really.
More importantly, there's no video recording.
Right.
Oh, so there's no.
Yeah, so that's an issue, so. It's, it's a, it's an issue that we need to deal with.
Are you meeting you?
Uh, yeah, Brian.
Yeah, the royal.
The royal, because I, I want to note that we haven't.
So.
Lead downward.
Yeah.
We can go back just for the histor- I'm begging for the historical commission because, you know, when they're deal, they're dealing with land use too and they're, they've got votes on.
And they get slammed.
Preservation.
No, I, I'm not saying it's not a big, big deal, I'm saying we can't just hire somebody else.
For them, could you? Even just as a person of just hourly, because this is an hourly entity.
I don't know if there's legal, legal issues with that due to medical, like, I can help, but.
But it's not a permanent position, it's a, it's a contract.
Can you just find that out?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, they're really struggling without, uh, it's like back to the dark ages.
Yeah, it's important, or can we get them a, can we, can we get them a recording device at the least?
Yes, that, that, yeah.
It's terrible.
I know that they exist.
While I'm talking to Art, I can talk to.
There you go.
It's another legal question.
We have human resources, you can, they, I should be able to, you know.
Yeah, no, no, you're right, no, you're right.
Printing and supplies, this budget, did you get your, uh, building code books online yet?
No, but it wouldn't be printing a, no, this is, it, it, it would be books and periodicals.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh.
Bedtime reading.
Right.
Well, he needs, he needs to have access to that.
I agree.
But I would, there's actually electronic versions, I just say get the electronic so you can Google.
Right.
Windows or.
I think it is actually more than three hundred for that one alone.
That doesn't surprise me.
Just fill in.
Look it in, look it in and fill it in so you can always have access to those building codes.
Um, what else?
In your office.
The one that jumped, which I don't know where we ended up with is travel. I think some of us are still rather enthusiastic about it, um.
Right. Um.
Is that going to revert this year?
Revert back down, or I mean that I, uh, well, it's whatever we.
It's been five hundred.
It's been five hundred for the past two.
So did we not get it in the twen-?
We didn't get the increase.
We didn't get an increase.
We're still at five hundred.
We wanted twenty-five hundred so we could actually go to the national.
Right, no, we did, no, it, it, it was at five hundred, it got, it got funded at five hundred.
Oh, okay, I didn't.
But we wanted it to go to twenty-five hundred so you could go to a national.
For the override, but it didn't, yeah, that didn't happen.
They took it out.
Right.
Wow, I think given what we're asking for this year, I'm.
All right, I, sorry, Brian, I think we need to wait another year.
Yeah.
But I want to make sure your licensing is for both employees are covered.
Yeah, I was going to say, if we have two employees.
Right, so dues, so dues and memberships for APA, those would probably have, it wouldn't be doubled, but it would probably, it's six hundred.
Six hundred? So it's a sliding scale based on salary.
Right.
And then if you have your ACAP, AICP certification, it's more. And then you have to, like, that's a very expensive certification.
Right, no, we'll, we'll figure that out and that, that will have to get, that will have to get up. My, 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 um, the one thing that has consistently, we have not been doing and you can see it went from three thousand to twenty-five hundred, we are only really using, you can see on the snapshot of, um, it's probably around a thousand or so, um, year, for, for the whole year. So it's possible we can just shift so the budget, total budget doesn't change, but, but maybe some of it comes out of the advertising and goes into tuition or dues and memberships. So, um, Savannah Nicole and I can look and see what actual numbers we need for that.
Do that so you can have professional development for two people.
Yeah, no, that's the point, yes, exactly.
I strongly urge you to put as much into tuition as you can.
Yep.
Okay. Um.
And I would claim that even if we have to throw in an extra K on top, because I'm really disturbed that it's been zero for so many years.
Which, which one are you talking?
The tuition.
Tuition.
Oh, yeah.
But when you've gone to SNEPA, how do you pay for that?
Dues and memberships and travel.
I don't like the titles of these because we don't, and maybe that's a conversation when we go meet with FinCom, we should have the conversation of these, as it says in tuition, it's not, we're not, it's continuing education.
Continuing education.
And, you know, for communication, these.
The thing is, I, also, all, we're no longer going to be submitting these Excel sheets. It's actually going to be all through Munis right now, that we're going to be, so they might have different categories anyway. We, we had a very small training on it, but we haven't, no one's actually gone into Munis to actually do the budgeting. So some of these, um, some of the, um.
The titles?
Yeah, the titles may change, but.
It would be excellent because I think it's also deceptive, like, it looks like you're like traveling, going to Bahamas and sitting in the sun, right? It's actually like.
Can't do that for five hundred.
You can't do that.
Honestly, so almost all of my travel, my travel budget, really, it's, it's going to Boston for, you know, a monthly meeting or for some reason if I have to pay for parking when I'm going to SNEPA or some other conference, but.
I mean.
It's transportation.
Yeah, it's tr- it's, it's either using the train or for parking.
So what, what I would, one way of looking at this is how many professional meetings, how much C, continue education would you be able to do in a year, price that out and put that into tuition is.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
AICP certification, there's a specific amount of CM credit you need, so we could like use that to do that as a base.
So.
The rest of the players don't.
May, maybe you don't, yeah, maybe you don't remember this, but I do not have a AICP certification.
We'll get there, that's the other thing is we wanted you to get there.
Yeah, we just haven't been putting it in the budget.
So let's put it in the budget.
Well, I would, I would just observe then that that is something that we need to.
So get it in the budget and bring it back to us next week so we can look at it.
I think it's.
Say yes.
Okay, so.
You know, we'll figure.
If you go to one conference a year, then you'll get your credits and.
Yeah, yeah.
So I have a question, because years ago I remember looking at total budgets for planning departments and I know that's, uh, a different way of looking at it and it's always apples to oranges, but is, have we, when we add it all up, does it look crazy or not? And that's not to be answered, but.
It does, it does, if you look at other, so if you look at other.
I think it's bigger, um, a lot bigger.
Much bigger, they have, they have like, they have like nine or ten full-time people, I mean, it's like.
Brookline's huge.
Oh, Brookline, I thought you said Lexington.
About sixty thousand population and they're like.
Literally a different world.
Oh, eleven people in planning office is huge. So, but what's comparable Belmont, I think is the closest.
We are lower and even at the end of this budget, we will be lower than most any other comparable community. So, I mean, that, at least we have going for us, we have that, you know, going for us.
Even, um, for a very sympathetic manager, I think at some point we do want to look at the total request, um, because that's what they will do because it's the department budget.
Honestly, most people are going to be looking at the total request and number of added full-time employees.
Right, so there we are.
And can you have comparisons for peer towns?
Um, not at my fingertips for this budget year, but, but, I mean, that when.
I think that would help.
I do too. That's not for, I mean, we.
No, that's for town, that's for town meeting, it's not like, yeah, yeah.
Well, not yet, no, 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 finance committee, yeah, Lisa too.
Yeah, I mean, I think she's aware, but.
Yeah, I'm from Pittsburgh, it's a different animal.
It wouldn't help to remind her even if she is aware.
No, without, I mean, it's easy enough to get.
First thing is to get this, but I, I am thinking as we're talking and you're, you guys are adding extras that I sympathize with, but just we, it'll be a total number that's going to be examined.
Alright, so.
What's fiscal year nineteen budget total, what's the actual, do we know what that is?
The actual?
Yes, because we've ended, but it's not on here.
Was it one forty-four, nine?
One forty-four.
That's, that's the budget.
That was what we asked for, I believe it, actually, I think all of this was funded, I can't tell you for sure, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I, we just, we should also have that, the actual, true actual, what we request and what, because we, we constantly are coming in under.
That comes in, so that, that all comes in through Munis, so I'll be, we'll be able, when we're, when I'm actually putting it in, we'll see exactly how much we asked for and how much we got for each year, each fiscal year. So that will, and, you know, it's not going to completely blow up this year, it's going to go up maybe a little. Well, I mean, it's probably going to go up at the least, you know, fifty.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, damn it, damn.
So, yeah, so Savannah Nicole and I are going to work on Thursday on this budget, um, and you'll, it'll be in your packets on Friday.
Okay.
For you to react to for Tuesday. Again, please, please, please take time to look at the River Street Architecture and Design, um, we have, are going to have hopefully a, a very robust conversation about that.
But we'll get a packet that will remind me on Friday to do that?
I, it will, it'll be on the agenda, yeah.
Okay, um, let's move on to the meeting minutes real quick, um, from Tuesday, August twenty-seventh at seven thirty.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't there.
I had a, I only had a couple of edits.
Mine aren't substantive, so I'm just going to pass these on to Brian. I, I don't think you guys want to hear all this, so I'll just.
I thought they were well done.
Dennis Carlon is two N's, not one, you know, Schleicher.
Peggy Schleicher is unknown as Peggy Schleicher.
I, that's what I thought.
And I think, um, it's Jay Gill, not James Gill, um.
And where are you?
Um, and it, there was a discussion about DPW.
Page, page, page.
Yes, I know, I'm looking very hard for it and I'm not seeing it, because unfortunately I didn't use red ink.
Nope.
Um, shoot.
Right. Yes.
How's that coming?
And, yeah, I have a lot of emails.
Oh, here it is, on the very first page on the, um, fifth bullet, Ms. Van Maring reached out to James Gill.
Oh, yeah.
And I, I don't know if that's his actual name, but.
Jay, Jay.
I think it actually is, but, but everybody knows him as Jay, so.
And the only other concern I have is that this is August twenty-seventh and it's, we're missing four months worth of getting edits, so we're really behind. And I don't know how we deal with that, but that's a real concern.
I, it's an issue that I, it's a, it's an HR issue that we need to deal with, that I need to deal with.
I'm just raising my concern.
I don't want, I don't really want to deal with it, but.
We don't blame you, but we.
But you must, you must.
We actually had the money too, that's what's annoying, we actually can afford that one.
However, you know, I, I don't want to violate labor rules, but I do want to see the.
We just got to figure out.
We got to figure out.
And maybe it teaches us we need, um, two in rotation or we need backup like a substitute.
Yeah, I mean, that's not typical, but, but we, I mean, we can't have this.
Well, if we didn't put the two with the historical commission, we might have been able to call on another one, so lessons learned.
Yeah, we thought we were, yeah.
How does this vote work? I sustain my, abstain from the, after the meeting closed with the meeting minutes continued for your meeting between you and.
I wasn't there.
Yeah, two people were.
So there's meeting notes for a non-quorum planning board meeting on this.
Oh, yes, I observed that, yes.
Well, I think.
Starting on page four.
Then just the two of us have to vote, I don't think it's got to be a majority.
So maybe the motion, if someone would like to entertain it, goes for the actual up to the adjournment and then from there, there's a second for the secondary.
So I'm going to move to, uh, approve the minutes as amended, um, excluding the last, um, portion of the agenda regarding the River Street project.
Say that again, approve the meeting minutes.
Do we need to discuss, are we good?
No.
As amended.
Excluding the last.
Excluding the River Street.
After adjournment. Uh, okay, all those in favor?
Aye. And then I'll make another motion.
Opposed, absent, Betsy and, did you want to abstaining?
Yeah.
Okay, so, three O and, uh, Betsy, you're going to abstain because you were present, okay. Um, and then, uh.
For the last portion, I'm going to make a motion that Ms. Reguirus and I approve the minutes for the final, um, for, for the final portion of the minutes relating to the River Street project.
And so, and for the first one, Craigor was absent and Van Maring.
Well, Heather and, and Hannan were absent, Craigor and Hannan were absent. They were absent.
Not, I thought.
Yeah, she, she changed.
Craigor and Hannan were absent.
So it was, it was three O two, Craigor and Hannan.
Hannan absent, got it.
And, uh, second?
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye. Two.
Two, uh, those and abstaining, aye.
Oh, yeah, right.
Heather, are you abstaining?
Yes.
You're two.
That's, yeah, you abstaining?
Yes.
So it's two O and three, which I think is fine because.
For after, for after, yes.
The majority of those who were there.
Voted, the majority of those who voted. Yeah, you're right. All right, uh, are we all set? Are we good to close it down?
Make a motion to.
Adjourn.
Adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. We'll see you next week, next Tuesdays are next meeting.
Renam.
Thanks so much.
Yep.